If everybody's ready, I'd like to call the meeting to order now at 7 o'clock. Okay, good evening, Exeter. Good evening to all present on the Zoom meeting, all of you at home watching on TV or on Facebook, and welcome to the June 29, 2020 Town of Exeter Select Board meeting. As Chair of the Select Board, once again, I'm going to invoke RSA 91A:23B, and as such, the meeting will be conducted without a physical quorum present in the same location. As always, we invite the public to participate via comment, although the usual rules of conduct and decorum still apply, and we appreciate your patience as we continue to work through these meetings virtually. All votes tonight will be taken via roll call, and our Clerk of the Select Board, Select Woman Gilman, will be taking the roll. And now I'd like to introduce the Select Board, and as I introduce you, if you would just let us know if you are alone in the room, and if not, who's with you? We'll start with Select Woman Roundtree Olaf. Good evening.
Hi, I'm here in the room by myself.
Great. Selectwoman Brown, good evening.
Good evening, I am here by myself.
Okay. Selectwoman Gilman.
I am at home and I am alone.
Thank you, good evening. And Vice Chair, Selectwoman Cowan.
Hi, everybody, I'm here and I'm by myself.
And I'm Nico Papakosandis, the Chair of the Select Board, and I also am alone here in the room. With us, we have the Town Manager, Rustine, and our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, and respective town staff who will be joining us throughout the agenda. We do have a full agenda this evening, so I'd like to jump right in. The first order of business will be public comment, and we'll open this up to any of you who would like to make public comment to the Board. We do ask that if your comment is applicable to anything on the agenda, that you save your remarks to that point in the meeting when we get to that. But if you've got something that's not on the agenda that you'd like to comment on, we will give you a moment to raise your hand, and either Dan or Bob will let you into the meeting, and I will pause.
I'll just say, because I see someone has called in on a phone, but if anyone else joins the meeting later by telephone, you can let the Chair know that you want to ask a question or speak by pressing *9 to raise your hand, and then if you're called upon, you can hit *6 to unmute or mute yourself. So if you're wanting to speak on the phone, you hit *9, and then *6 unmutes yourself.
Okay, great. At this time, I'll pause for a moment to let anybody and everybody that wishes to comment either raise their hand or contact Bob. Bob, if you could let me know if there's anybody out there.
So we got Ann Sermon.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Sermon.
Yes, good evening, this is Ann Sermon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, 14 Cullinway, I just had something quick. Happened to notice that there's an activity planned July 11th on the Swayze Parkway, it looks like the fun Exeter Fest, Music Fest, and Arts, et cetera, that's gone on for many years. I'm just concerned, because I realize this town, the city, is sort of opening up again, but it might be premature, and I'm just concerned about the health and safety of everybody, particularly since this town and this state borders on a very hot state of Massachusetts, and even though things are going well in New Hampshire, I'm concerned about us having a lot of people coming into this town. As you know, in prior meetings, we haven't even been able to get the town itself to agree to have everyone wear masks, even though I think a lot of folks are doing that. I'm very concerned about the health of this community, the social distancing, how that would be enforced in such a setting. Our local neighbors, Stratum Fair is canceled, Deerfield Fair is canceled, Seafood Festival is canceled. I realize this is a smaller event, but it's from 11:00 in the morning till 6:00 in the night, and that's a long time. Just a lot of concerns about that. Now, I realize maybe you are going to address this later on, I don't know, but I just happened to see it, and I was just concerned that this be something that is put off for later in the summer, once we know a lot more about how things are going in this state and in this town in terms of the health and COVID-19 progress. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Hi, I'll jump in. I'm not sure if you were present for the meeting that we had prior to this, but that event was actually already approved and was supposed to take place this past Saturday, but was canceled due to rain. We did discuss some of the things that you just mentioned, and as a Board agreed that we were okay with going forward with having a kickoff event of some kind, to see what we could do. Like in everything that we're doing, I think with the restaurants and other things around town, we're asking people to be precautious. We discussed spacing out the areas on the lawn so that groups could gather together and be socially distanced for that event. I don't know, Nico, if we have the minutes available for Ann to take a look at the details that we discussed.
They're in the project.
Okay, great. So Ann, if you want to take a look, I think some more of the finer details are on the Exeter website, and you can see what was discussed at the last meeting that we did to approve that. But thank you.
Thank you. And Selectwoman Cowan has her hand up as well.
Hi, yeah, so one of the things that I'm concerned with is, you know, our permits don't transfer, right? So like, just because you had a permit for one time, doesn't mean then you have a permit for something else on a different date. And I think Ann Sermon brings up some really good points, especially since we've seen some really concerning news out of states that are opening up, we're getting testing results that are happening in states that are opening up. And so I would like to talk about this. Thank you for bringing it up. And I, you know, fully support the idea of having safe socially-distanced events in our town, but I really want us to be thoughtful and deliberate as we're taking into consideration the news that, you know, that this is an evolving situation and an evolving health crisis. So let's be really careful when we're talking about this.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman.
Yes, I would agree with Selectwoman Cowan. One of the things that's happened in the past is that a party has come in with an application and then wanted to change the date, and changed it to a date that was already approved for another organization. And what we asked to have happen in that situation is for the two parties to work it out together, can one postpone, can one not postpone? And I know, and full disclosure, I am on the Board of Governors for the American Independence Museum, and while the festival is being reimagined and not occurring in the way that we're used to with hosts of people coming to Exeter, there was some discussion that the museum still has that date as part of their opening, whether it's virtual or one person showing something. And so there was discussion between the two bodies, but they did not agree on that date.
Thank you. Ms. Sermon, I think we're going to be discussing this a little bit later in the agenda, though it's not specifically on the agenda, which is why I'm happy to have this conversation now, we were going to include it in the COVID-19 update, but in all fairness to you, that's not spelled out. But when we deliberated over this at the last meeting, unfortunately, with the newest phase in by the Governor, there's really no reason legally not to permit something. Of course, I think that most of us are concerned with social distancing. We've seen in other states and other regions what's happening when things are opened so fast. I do know that the applicant has been working with James Murray, and I know James is on the call, so I don't know if this should be a time, James, you'd like to maybe weigh in on what you've done already to work with the applicant. I know that you've been working with him towards, you know, trying to recognize how best to social distance.
Yes, we have been working with the applicant on the event. I think one important thing to note is this is a very fluid situation, and we are getting more information from the surrounding states, as well as the country in general. It's something that we're working on the applicant, or with the applicant for, but I think we just have to keep an open mind about it and, you know, see where things go. We have gotten a lot of disturbing news in terms of spikes in other areas of the country, and I think that's something we really need to pay close attention to, especially right now.
And I think all things considered, too, you know, the Governor could change, you know, at any day, the phase in. I mean, it's all fluid, as you said, so, you know, it is a concern as we move forward, getting larger groups together. But again, I know that the applicant, like any applicant, is working closely with you. It is different from the restaurants, you know, where the restaurants were permitted to have outside dining, they worked with you, obviously they were able to serve alcohol if they had an existing license to serve alcohol. Obviously, that is not the case with any type of a festival at Swayze Park. I know that was a concern. And Selectwoman Gilman, I agree that it's unfortunate that the two parties could not work out an agreement, but again, that's sort of out of our purview. So, Ms. Sermon, does that answer any of your questions? And again, we will probably be discussing this further in the meeting. We can hear you. No, we can hear you.
Okay. Yes and no, and I mean, I guess my concern is, it's not a new doubt permitting that is, you know, I'm sure that the Stratum Fair, Deerfield Fair, and all those other festivals, and the Boston Marathon were all permitted, but things happen, and there can be reasons why things are canceled or pushed out. And I just think it's a bit premature for the town to be, you know, opening itself up to a whole lot of people that you really aren't going to be able to control. I don't know how you're actually going to be able to enforce the social distancing. I know best efforts would probably be taken, but again, we don't really know what we don't know. And I know I sound a little cautious, but I just am. I do have to be, because we are surrounded by states that are not doing as well as New Hampshire is. And I just wanted to make that point. Again, thank you.
No, and I appreciate that, and you're right, to some degree. I mean, we've been lucky when you look at our numbers. I think it's a little bit of luck, and I think it's a lot of caution. People have taken the CDC regulations seriously. Most people are wearing masks, or at least wearing masks when they're in close places. And to open up too soon, if you listen to the experts on the news over the weekend and today, could be a recipe for disaster. So I think you need to balance that, and as Mr. Murray said, realize that it's fluid, and take it day by day, and just try to be careful. Selectwoman Gilman and Selectwoman Cowan, you both still have your hands up.
I mean it. I was going to ask Julie a question. Do you know, is the American Independence Museum planning on having nothing on that day? Or, you know, I just, I haven't received any communications, I just don't know.
They are planning to have some broadcast events and virtual events. They just felt that the two events happening, one outside and one virtually, so pretty much inside, would be conflicting for both audiences. Okay.
And one last comment, and I'd like to bring the Town Manager in for a moment, if I may. Ms. Sermon brought up some very good examples of communities nearby that have canceled fairs or festivals, events that they've been doing for decades. But I know, Mr. Dean, you've reached out to a number of communities statewide through your resources, you know, through the NHMA. Can you kind of weigh in on what other communities are doing canceling going forward?
Honestly, Nico, it's been a mix. There are some communities out there in the state that have done more than others in terms of allowing things to happen, and then there are communities that have done cancellations that they haven't allowed, you know, things like certainly rental of buildings, and certain events that they've, you know, they've been concerned would draw people in, and not necessarily, you know, promote the idea of social distancing and so forth. And I think, so, the short answer is it's been very much a mix out there, depending upon where you go. So, these kinds of issues, we've talked with Primex about them. I think what they have said to us basically is that these decisions are really all local decisions, how you want to handle them, and that their strong recommendation is that these events, if they are, if they go on, that they all include, you know, the adherence to the universal guidelines for, and whatever guidelines there are for those particular events or entities. So it's really, like I said, it's really been a mix, and communities are making different decisions based upon, you know, the local flavor and what the concepts, you know, what their local elected officials are doing.
Sure. And I, you know, I haven't seen the numbers, and I don't know, you know, if you've done the research to this extreme, but certainly there are counties, unlike Rockingham, who have really not been affected. So perhaps some of those communities that you're speaking of are the ones that are more apt to open. You know, again, the other thing, too, to consider is there, I'm sure, some other communities that may be allowing things on private property. This, again, is on town property, so I mean, that does raise a concern as well. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Nico, if I may, just quickly, there are two people in the attendees that have their hand raised. One of them is Scott Ruffner, the organizer of the event, I believe, so I don't know if you...
That was going to be one of my two comments.
Him and someone else, another phone number, have their hands raised, so I don't know.
I'd like to hear from both of them. I was giving Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, who had her hand up, the opportunity to speak first.
So I'll just, I'll just quickly throw in, the first point was going to be that I saw that the representative from team was on the line. The second thing is, I think that this is an excellent opportunity for us to be proactive, and also to be sort of control how we handle events like this, if we are going to have events like this in the future. Because the Governor has opened up the state, I think this is an opportunity for us to say, okay, great, if we are going to have an event, this is how it's going to be structured, these are the requirements, similar to the Beer Fest, perhaps, right? They sell tickets, and they have a capacity at which a number of people can be on Swayze Parkway. If we are going to allow this event, which we had already pre-approved, then maybe we start to think about it in that way. We, you know, if it's 11 to 6:00 PM, that actually gives us a really great window that we don't have a full capacity of people the entire day, because no one's going to stay there for, you know, no offense, Scott, no one is staying the entire six, seven hours, right? So then you have waves of people coming in and out. I think this is an opportunity for us to get a little creative versus just saying absolutely no. We have masks available for people to bring with them, we have the social distancing circles for families to bring blankets, you know, everything doesn't have to be a simple all yes or all no. Let's think about, if we're going to continue to actually live in this town, and continue to live, we have to start figuring out ways to do it so that people can, and they're not getting so upset that they just go off and do it themselves. So I'll leave you with that, and then hopefully Scott can have something else to add.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ruffner?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Good evening, yes, we can.
Okay. Scott Ruffner, 11 Hall Place, Director of Team. So, yeah, a few things I want to address. I mean, first of all, what Lovey just pointed out, the reason that we chose to continue on with this event is because the concept in and of itself of the way we do the events in the park, even pre-COVID, they sort of embrace social distancing, and we lean into the green space in the park, and the events are not promoted in a way that we want 4,000 people shoulder to shoulder, like the Beer and Chili Fest. It's meant for people to space out, enjoy the day, and enjoy the park. And so that was always sort of the spirit of doing this and continuing on with it. And we've been working with James, and the reason we postponed it, the weather was not looking great, and also because we wanted to give everyone more time to comply with the new rules and the regulations and everything that we had received. So, you know, so if anyone was looking to now shut us down, you'd essentially be punishing us for taking, you know, the safety and the new measures very seriously, and wanting to give everyone more time to prepare, and the vendors to prepare, and for us to work with James. And so the date that we chose was really the only date that we could make it happen. We looked at every other possible date, and, you know, we, there was nothing really between us and the Independence Museum. We have an excellent relationship with the Independence Museum. We help promote the Independence Museum and their festival. But, you know, their event was canceled. And so I just want to remind the Select Board, and especially Selectwoman Gilman, that you had a public hearing about six months ago to address all of these issues, and there was, there's been so much confusion, and it was absolutely stated that, you know, that the Select Board would not be curating events and getting involved in matters of dates and those kinds of things. So the other event was canceled. It's now an online event, which we're helping to promote and certainly part of, and we are promoting that just as aggressively as we would promote ours in town. And for people that aren't comfortable coming out, there would be things for them to do that day virtually as well. So the notion that an online event and a outdoor event are somehow competing with each other, I just really don't understand that. And again, to complete the point on the permitting, you know, that was already set in stone, that you guys are not there to curate, the permits are submitted. Certainly during COVID, things are different, and I understand that, but we've done everything we can to make people aware of the rules, the regulations, there's a long list of guidelines for us to follow. And we have been working diligently with all of the vendors and performers to make sure we're following all of those guidelines. So certainly at this point, revisiting that, you know, would put us in a very difficult spot, as everybody is ready to go, and has been planning, and the date has changed, and, you know, I ask you to give us the same sort of gratitude you did on June 27th, because we're going to be even more diligent with safety and guidelines.
Thank you. You know, this subject came up currently, Mr. Ruffner, because somebody made a public comment, and certainly this was something we were going to discuss later on in the meeting, however, it was not specifically on the agenda, so that's why we're discussing it now with public comment. And to your point, you know, we talked about this going forward on June 27th, and I don't know why there may be confusion that you're not necessarily going to go forward on July 11th. You know, the Governor has opened up the next phase. Under that phase, groups of 10 or more can congregate. Of course, social distancing is continuing to be suggested. The wearing of masks is continued to be suggested. The Select Board at the last meeting voted for one to strongly suggest that people wear masks. I completely understand that you've been working with James Murray, and I know that you've done everything that you've been asked to do so far, and I know that you've got control over the vendors in that regard. Your comment about the permitting continues to be under the Parks and Rec. However, things have changed since COVID-19. The farmers' market wanted to continue on Thursdays, they have continued on Thursdays, albeit at a different venue. So, you know, the fact of whether you're going to go forward on July 11th, I don't think was even in question. Certainly, there are some concerns generally because of what we've seen, not only nationally, but globally over the last week, with some places that have opened up too fast and too soon. I don't think that has anything to do with your festival or your organization. You've always followed the permits and applied them as has been directed. You work very closely with Parks and Rec. So I think to maybe suggest that we're looking to cancel your event is getting ahead of the game. I don't think that's what was being discussed. Somebody made a public comment, and we're responding accordingly. So I just wanted to make that clear with you. And the permitting process, right, has not changed, and we did deliberate this just seven months ago, but with COVID, like everything else, everything has been fluid. So there are things that have come before the Select Board, such as closing the Parkway to vehicular traffic, that wouldn't necessarily come before the Board, but these are some things now. I mean, our number one priority is to ensure public safety and public health, and we want to see our businesses open back up. We want to see the economy, you know, you know me through, you know, interactions, we've known each other for years, the first person that wants to go to a concert is me. But, you know, in time, that will happen, and hopefully, with this first step, July 11th, you know, as Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf said, I hope that will be the first step towards moving forward. But we could still have concerns.
Okay, yeah, that's perfectly fine, and there's been concerns all along, so I understand that, yeah.
Do you have any other comment before we move on to the next person?
Nope, I'm all set.
Thank you. Bob, is there anybody else? You said there were two people.
Yes, so we do have a, someone calling in on a phone, their number ends in 1-0, and I'm just going to ask them, when I unmute them, to please read out their, or please state their name and their address.
Thank you, Dan.
No trouble.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening, Jerry Hamel, 17 Little Pine Lane. Basically, I have the same, I have the same concerns as Ms. Sermon has. Basically, I'm looking at, as this is ramping up across country, we're finding that things are changing daily. And as things are changing daily, we're seeing Governors change their minds about things that are happening, and I hate to see all these events being canceled in New Hampshire, because they're events that we actually need. But we have a safety of our community that we have to look at as well. I mean, we've kept this community safe, as well as the state, by following these guidelines, and by watching other states that have been opening up too soon, they were adamant, as some of the people have spoken about, you know, wanting to get things going, that they started things. And now they're shutting things back down again. I don't want to see New Hampshire become one of those. I'm worried about the people of our town, and I would like to have the Town, the Board of Selectmen, really think about this whole thing. Think of what they're really doing, think of what the ramifications can be. And I don't think anybody's being punished. This is the middle of a pandemic that's not getting better, it's getting worse. So with that said, I just hope that you'll give a lot of consideration, and hopefully have it postponed to a later date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamel. And consider we will, when we get to the COVID-19 portion of our agenda, we have some other things to discuss about the Parkway, including, we're coming towards the end of the extended 30-day closure for vehicular traffic. So, any other public comment at this time? I'll pause for one more moment, Dan and Bob?
We don't see anybody.
Okay, great. We'll move on. We do not have any proclamations or recognitions tonight. We do have minutes from our June 15, 2020 Exeter Select Board meeting. If there are no revisions or amendments, I would look for a motion to approve the June 15 minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of June 15.
Okay, a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion. Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan.
Yes.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
The Chair says aye, the Chair.
Yes, he does.
The Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
I say aye, passes unanimously. Thank you. We don't have any appointments tonight, so now we can jump right in. We have quite a few discussion and action items. The first presentation this evening, we have Chief Poole and Deputy Chief Monk with us this evening, and this was a follow-up to several meetings ago. We asked the Chief to come before the Board and talk about Exeter Police Department procedures and policies. I know that... I know that since he was named chief last year, Chief Pullan, over the last 12 months, has been working vigorously to review all of the Exeter Police Department policies and procedures and revise and reform as appropriate. And we felt that this might be a nice time for he and Deputy Chief Monk to come before us and give a presentation, certainly entertain questions from the board. So Chief and Deputy Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for having us on tonight. We have prepared a slide presentation for you all, and then we could take some questions afterwards. I would ask Mr. Glawack if you could play that for us.
Good evening. This is Chief Stefan Pullan of the Exeter Police Department. The following presentation is meant to offer a brief yet informational overview of our agency with regards to our current practices involving recruitment, selection, officer training, our use of force policy, initiatives, and some extra services that we offer. The mission and value statement of the Exeter Police Department has always been to serve...
There's supposed to be video.
So Bob, or Dan, did we have a glitch?
Did you down there for a second? Or what?
It's just the, it's just the audio. There's no video attached to it.
All right, let me try that again.
Thanks.
Right before the meeting and then...
Bob, Bob did warn me that this might, this is the first time they've tried to do this, so.
Glory of technology.
And it worked this afternoon during the trial run, so.
Of course it did. We can also do stick figures if that helps. We'll just act it out for you guys in the background as you talk through it.
Good evening. This is Chief Stefan Pullan of the Exeter Police Department. The following presentation is meant to offer a brief yet informational overview of our agency with regards to our current practices involving recruitment, selection, officer training, our use of force policy, initiatives, and some extra services that we offer. The mission and value statement of the Exeter Police Department has always been to serve and protect all people within our jurisdiction with respect, with fairness, with compassion, and without prejudice. To be able to continually assure that we have the very best men and women serving the town of Exeter, who are sworn to uphold their alts and support our mission and values, is a reflection of the importance we place upon our recruitment and selection process. We coordinate open positions with human resources and advertise to online job forums, our department and town websites, and onto social media platforms. The first steps to becoming an officer include sending a cover letter and resume, filing a town application, and passing a written test. The written test is broken down into cognitive and personality sections and is offered through the Great Bay Police Testing Alliance several times a year. The last test took place in February 2020, and we saw 309 applicants, which out of those, 195 people passed the exam. The results of this test are also sent to over 25 agencies located in New Hampshire and on the seacoast of Maine. The physical fitness test is based on the Cooper Aerobics Institute standards. For the Full Time Police Officer Academy, applicants must pass at least the 35th percentile on both the entrance and exit tests. Candidates will then be invited to participate in an interview or an oral board consisting of three or four senior members of the department. Typically, this consists of a ranking member, the field training supervisor, and a veteran officer. Both background-related and hypothetical ethical situational questions are asked and candidates are scored and ranked. If selected and given a conditional offer of employment, candidates are then assigned a background investigator, who then meets with the candidate in person and goes over a comprehensive questionnaire that covers everything from complete employment histories, finances, criminal histories, previous drug use, and other important topics. It is made clear throughout the hiring process that dishonesty, including through omissions, will result in disqualification from the hiring process. Candidates with prior law enforcement experience are subject to additional scrutiny in regards to previous disciplinary issues, inappropriate use of force, et cetera. At the successful completion of the background investigation, the candidate must then successfully pass a polygraph exam, a psychological exam, including an in-person interview with a psychologist who specializes in law enforcement pre-employment exams, and pass a drug screen and physical exam. Upon successful completion of all these steps, a hiring recommendation is then made to the town manager, who will approve or disapprove. The candidate is then subsequently sworn in as an Exeter Police Officer. Exeter has, in the past, and continues to not hire candidates when derogatory information is discovered in their background. Our philosophy is that we would rather not hire anyone at all than settle for a candidate with questionable issues. We view a thorough and extensive background investigation as one of the most important things a police department can do to ensure that suitable people are hired to work as police officers. Once hired, training officers must complete the 16-week or 594-hour New Hampshire Police Academy in Concord, New Hampshire. All New Hampshire law enforcement officers attend the same academy. Officers must also successfully complete an in-house 12-week field training officer program. During this time, they are paired with senior officers who act as trainers and mentors throughout the training period. Exeter uses the San Jose model for its FTO program, which is comprised of a formal training program, policy review, written tests, practical exercises, and a daily graded evaluation. As the weeks proceed through the training, the officer is given progressively more responsibility, with the goal being that at the end of the 12 weeks, they are functioning at an independent level. This model is recognized as best practice for field training. After successfully completing the police academy and the FTO program, officers are released on solo status. They are probationary employees for a 12-month period, during which time they are closely monitored and continue to be evaluated on a monthly basis. Again, next to the background investigation, we view the FTO program as the most important crucial evaluation tool to determine an individual's suitability and capability to do police work. We would rather start the whole process over again than retain someone who is not suitable. This slide is illustrating the state of New Hampshire training requirements for police officers. Each officer shall complete at least eight hours annually of refresher training, exclusive of firearms, first aid, defensive tactics, and these are sanctioned by the agency or the council. All in-service law enforcement officers who are issued or carry a defensive weapon and who are authorized to use force in the course of their employment shall, in addition to annual firearms range qualification, attend and complete at least once each calendar year a refresher training segment or segments of not less than four hours regarding the use of deadly and non-deadly force. Noteworthy is the fact that officers are only required to do eight hours of continuing education per year, and that the nature of that training is left up to the individual agency. Additionally, firearms training is only required to be done annually, meaning that many officers typically only practice with and shoot their firearms once a year. Also, currently, there are no requirements for annual de-escalation, implicit bias, or dealing with emotionally disturbed persons training, or any requirements for officers to participate in reality-based training with real-life role players, which is arguably some of the most effective training there is. It is important to reiterate that police training costs money. It costs us approximately $2,500 in overtime alone to put on one four-hour department-wide training class. This overtime cost is to cover off-duty officers coming in for the class and for covering the shifts of on-duty officers attending the class. Also, many continuing education classes that are worthwhile charge you tuition and, again, also incur overtime. Exeter PD strives to exceed the minimum mandatory training requirements within our budgetary constraints. Last year, department training was conducted on annual pistol training and qualification, annual rifle training and qualification, active shooter and warm zone response, TASER, use of force, fair and impartial policing, CPR, first aid, Narcan, implicit bias, and emergency casualty care. Also, on average, officers received additional 52 hours of training by attending seminars and taking online courses. We have also recently been able to host and offer our citizens some more guidance regarding bystander training. And with the positive feedback that we received, we hope to continue to do so again in the future. We have also become engaged in the National One Mind Campaign and established a clearly defined and sustainable partnership with Seacoast Mental Health. We have also developed and implemented a model policy addressing police response to persons affected by mental illness and continue to train and certify our officers in this area. The Exeter Police Department utilizes a set of general orders which contain approximately 138 policies and procedures. These are comprehensive and focused on a variety of topics, including ethics, conduct and behavioral standards, civil rights and hate crimes, use of force, courtroom practices and procedures, training equipment, consistent process improvements, et cetera. These adhere to acceptable state and police council standards and also use recommended national standards, such as input and model policies from the International Association of Chiefs of Police and the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. Just as we are constantly reviewing all of our policies and procedures, we perform continued revisions and review of our use of force policy. This ensures best and acceptable practices are adhered to and that our policy is at the forefront of addressing current issues regarding banned chokeholds and strangleholds, require and define de-escalation techniques, limit shooting at or from motor vehicles, exhausting all alternatives prior to utilizing lethal force, requiring officers who witness excessive force or malfeasance to intervene, offers a defined use of force continuum, and requires comprehensive reporting, review, and tracking of force incidents by supervisors and command staff. Accurate and timely reporting of use of force incidents is the essential first step in the process of monitoring such responses. A use of force report will be prepared whenever a firearm is discharged for any reason other than training or target practice or to euthanize an animal, excluding a dog. When a firearm is pointed at any individual, when a non-lethal weapon is used upon a subject, including the pointing of a TASER at a person, when an employee takes an action that results in an injury or death of another person or alleged to have resulted in injury or death, including handcuffs that are alleged to be too tight, or applies any degree of physical force as defined by the agency. These next few slides show what our use of force reporting form looks like. This form is filled in conjunction with the written police report and a supervisor or defensive tactics slash weapon instructor review of the incident. We hold all of our employees accountable. Following any incident involving the use of force, the officer shall ensure the written documents describe in detail all the circumstances surrounding the incident. Each use of force report shall be reviewed by the first-line supervisor and the lieutenant prior to being submitted to the chief of police. Reviews are for adherence and compliance with policy and procedures and applicable law. Incidents are also tracked in a program to establish an early intervention system to identify any flags with certain officers and their use of force. The purpose of the early intervention system is for supervisors to monitor and report officers who receive two or more complaints in the past month and report officers who have two or more use of force incidents or complaints in the past quarter. It is also used to require officers to attend retraining and/or be further monitored by an immediate supervisor after their first quarterly report. Officers are subject to an internal review regarding the filing of multiple reports, which may result in discipline and/or termination of the officer. As we reach the end of our presentation, I find it important with this slide to readdress with our citizens some of the extra initiatives and partnerships that the Exeter Police offer and are passionately involved with. This list does not encompass all, but gives you a general understanding of our commitment to our community. In closing, I would like to recognize the dedicated men and women of the Exeter Police Department who work proudly, honorably, and tirelessly towards achieving a balance of policing styles with an enhanced priority towards service-style policing. These efforts continue to make Exeter one of the safest towns in New Hampshire and also places it in the top fifth percentile of safest cities in the United States. Above all, we thank all of our citizens for the continued strong visual and vocal support, honest appreciation, and cooperation to help us succeed with our mission to maintain a safe, welcoming, and inclusive community for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Pullan, Deputy Chief Monk, for that presentation. That's, that's a good first step. Obviously, accountability begins with transparency. And I think that moving forward, we, I, I think this is a great step to come before the board and before people watching tonight. From here, I'm hoping that we can maybe move into a community task force, or maybe hold, and in addition to, hold a community forum with select the town leaders to join you to have a conversation and a dialogue with citizens, having it be productive towards moving forward rather than airing complaints. Obviously, it's key to look to the past, because that's how we learn from mistakes. We learn from mistakes and we learned what we did right, looking back at the past and then move forward. My work with the Budget Recommendations Committee for, for three years, I'm intimately knowledgeable of, of the police budget. And it always comes in very lean. There's, there's no waste in the police budget. And, and there have been times where the Budget Recommendations Committee has recommended to the select board that they add extra money. As there's no national set of standards for you to follow, and, you know, you're bound to, you know, what is offered here at the state, you're bound to the training that the officers receive at the academy. Obviously, with both of your expertise, this might be a good time for you to collectively look at what additional resources, including training. And by training, I don't mean the quantity of hours, but the quality of the training. Is there something that's not addressed in the academy that you feel would benefit the department? And start thinking about that as you put the budget together for this year, because certainly, you know, that's something that should be given consideration if, if you, if you feel that that training is necessary to go above and beyond what the academy provides. So with that, I know the rest of the board probably have comments, questions, continuing dialogue. I see two hands up. We'll start with Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Thank you, Chief Pullan, and thank you for sharing that. First, I just want to make sure that people know where they can access, oh, you moved. Sorry, you moved on my screen. Where people can access the video if they weren't able to watch it during our meeting. Do you guys know if...
We can, we can find a way to post that, I'm sure, through Exeter TV.
Yeah. I, I think it'll be, I think it'll be really helpful for, for us to do that, because I think it's also helpful for other towns to see what it is that we're doing and the steps that we're taking to make sure that what may not be happening nationally as of yet is happening locally, so that we can set an example for what's, what's taking place. And even more importantly, I think I could probably outdo the number of sit-ups that the average female officer can do. I'm just putting it out there. No, but that's all. So thank you so much for, for sharing that, you know. Not everything has to be the most serious thing ever, but I do think that this is very important that you guys did this and, and shared this with the public. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Chair Cowan.
Thank you so much for that information and the presentation. And I really appreciate both of you, your, the time and effort that you're putting into, into the town, into your service, into your force. A couple of things, you know, also, I want to be, you know, really clear about my appreciation for you moving forward and updating these policies after some pretty horrifying events. And, you know, making sure that we are being responsive as a town. There were two things that, that struck me in your presentation, especially around the background checks. I have a number of, of family members who are in the military, and I have done a number of, of background check, you know, interviews with people about security clearances, you know, for close friends or people in my life who've been, who've been renewing their security clearance. So it struck me when you said you only talk to the individual. And I know that this is probably not an Exeter Police Force decision, but I'm just wondering what we're missing when we're not talking to community members, family members, friends. You know, this is one of the most basic things about security clearances and, you know, and, and military members. So that was something that I thought was definitely... So that was something that I thought was definitely a missing component of this. What are we missing by not talking? It looks like Deputy Monk, you're...
Yeah, so we do do that. These folks get a packet that I would, I mean, it's probably about an inch thick that they have to fill out, and the meeting is with the background investigator. That's the initial step prior to them starting it. Then the investigator then goes and does the background, and that's interviewing everybody, neighbors, coworkers. And quite honestly, as we said in the slide, this is, in our opinion, the preliminary gatekeeping job. That's how important a proper background is. So we just don't talk to people that they list on the form because you're only going to put people on the form that say good things about you. So we actually go out and try to contact folks and do detective work, right? Talk to folks who didn't put us a reference, right? And we seek those people out. A common question, when I would do backgrounds, what I would call the work, and I would say, who did this person not get along with at work? And I want to talk to that person.
Like their ex-wife. Yeah, call the ex-wife.
Yeah, I want to see what that person has to say about you. So I hope I clarified that.
Yes, no, that's great. Thank you.
Okay.
And then the other thing that I was curious about, and I know that we have pending legislation at the State House, so maybe this is not available, but what types of complaints do you get? Do you get complaints of people calling and saying, Officer so-and-so keeps stopping me? Or, I'm just wondering sort of what the feedback from the community is and if you can't answer in specifics, because you probably can't because of privacy, but what does it look like in the aggregate?
I can say the majority of what we would typically describe as a complaint comes in as an initial complaint actually isn't a complaint at all. It's a question about procedures and why was that done that certain way? Why was the spotlight flashed in my rearview mirror during the nighttime stop? Things like that. And then once they get educated on why the officer did that, for safety and whatnot, or why did he park a certain way to protect himself from oncoming traffic, once they understand why things were done, it's not what initially came in as a complaint. Does that make sense?
But yeah, and I just was wondering, are there complaints about, when I was younger and living in Peterborough, I remember having a friend who always used to get stopped because his car was so loud. And so are those the kind of complaints that we're having? Are we having complaints about so-and-so is stopping me too much? Or it's just process?
Yeah. Come on. Yeah, I was just going to say, quite frankly, we don't get a lot of citizen complaints. And it could be everything from, I thought the officer, I didn't like the officer's tone of his voice or their demeanor, but as far as kind of the stuff you're describing anecdotally, we don't get a lot of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectwoman Cowan. And Chief and Deputy Chief, I think going back to moving forward with further conversations, having a community, maybe a task force, a community forum, maybe taking a look at what types of calls that you're being called out on, and are those the types of calls that you should be going on? And maybe speaking as a community and having a dialogue back and forth as to what exactly is expected of the police department, of course, above and beyond keeping us safe. Perhaps there are calls that you're being called out on that you shouldn't be going out on as a police unit. I think I'd like to continue that conversation moving forward.
Yes, we would envision something like an external stakeholders committee or a group and work alongside them, have them work alongside the board, leaders in the community, business owners, everything, and see what that looks like, identify areas we can improve in, training areas, and things like that.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Selectwoman Gilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you, Chief and Assistant Chief, for your presentation. I think it was very thorough. I had a question, I think to follow up on Selectwoman Cowan's comments. What I heard was the gist of it was, is there a record-keeping of these kinds of calls or complaints or needs for information so that we can see a consistency, I guess, of an officer?
Yes, we do. And we actually, we have a form in our lobby that dictates exactly how someone can file a complaint, all the way up to how to file a complaint against me to go directly to the town manager. Our website also has a tab called inquiries, and that further dictates our entire complaint policy, all the way up to the different types of findings that a complaint can have and that the complainant will be kept in communication with what we're doing. And we do track everything, and we have records of everything.
Thank you. One other question is I've been a Selectwoman for a number of years, and I've never had a ride-along.
Well, that's going to be a big part of the stakeholders meeting too, is once we get over the COVID situation, we can start having ride-alongs. And obviously, what you're kind of segueing in is we're also going to invite you all to some reality-based training that we're going to have pretty soon. So I hope that you do all attend that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would look forward to that. Any other questions or comment from the board? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Selectwoman Brown.
That's fine. I just said, great job, Chief, and I'd be happy to be a part of any stakeholder group you wanted to set up.
Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you both, Chief Poole and Deputy Chief Monk. And I think I'd like to continue forward with this. Selectwoman Cowan, I was going to ask if you would like to take the lead from the select board along with Selectman Brown in working and putting together the task force and working with the Chief and Deputy Chief.
I would be happy to, and I think it's something that we, as a board, it'll require notices and all of the right-to-know stuff, we'll have to figure out that piece. I think that this is going to be a really powerful tool to get the community involved, the town leadership involved, the police involved, and I'm really happy and feeling really positive about the direction we're taking this.
Great. Thank you both for volunteering, and just so that everybody understands, Chief Poole and Deputy Chief Monk, to have more than two select board members as part of the task force would violate the right-to-know law, so that's why there could only be two. But obviously, you will be our delegates to this and report back to the select board after you've met. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you both very much. We look forward to continuing this dialogue. Next on the agenda, we have Jennifer Perry, Department of Public Works Director, who, despite what we're seeing out our window, is going to talk to us about the water shortage and drought.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
I'm sorry. It seems like there's somebody, there's one person from the call-in participants. I don't know if it was about this prior...
Yeah, Jennifer, if you could hold one moment. Dan or Bob, could you identify whether there's a question?
It was a woman named Elizabeth Brosnan. She just put her hand down.
All right.
So Jennifer, if you'll excuse me one minute, if Elizabeth is still on and wants to put her hand up, we'll give her a moment. It's a little more difficult than being in the same room. Okay, I'm sorry, Jennifer, please, go ahead.
Well, good evening. Thank you for indulging me. I did have quite a bit of information that I put in your packet for tonight regarding water resources, and I apologize because when I put them out, they're in color and they're very legible and easy to read, but in the translation and scanning and what you wind up seeing, I believe, is black and white. But anybody who's interested in seeing the color reports, just let me know and I can get them to you, or I may come up with another way to post these updates so that everybody can see them in color format. But the basics are, even though we are receiving rain today and we did yesterday or starting last night, we've only received a little over a half an inch in the last four days. And the reality is that we're in a fairly significant precipitation deficit for 2020. We've received to date 17 inches of rain. Normally, we would have received 23 inches by this time of year, and so we're in a deficit of about six inches. And that may not sound like a lot, but when we typically receive 45 inches over the year, it is a significant portion that we're in deficit right now. I'm sure some of you have noticed that the Exeter River levels are lower than normal. They're actually significantly lower than normal. We monitor a river gauge at Hay Road in Brentwood, and that has a 22-year history. And right now, that gauge is reading just under five cubic feet per second, and that is about the lowest it's ever been in the 22-year history for this particular date. So we're extremely low on our surface water flows, and as you know, that's about 70% of our water supply is water that we withdraw from the Exeter River. Our other source of water is groundwater, and even though our own wells are, I would say, holding their own, statewide groundwater levels are decreasing. So last Thursday, every Thursday, the U.S. Drought Monitor issues drought declarations and basically drought levels across the country, and they upgraded or downgraded, depending on which way you look at it. They changed this Southern New Hampshire status from abnormally dry, which is a D0 rating, to moderate drought, which is a D1 rating. And with that declaration, the town select board, you have the authority through Town Ordinance 1610 to establish water use restrictions. And the department is recommending that you establish a Level 2, which is essentially alternate-day landscape watering. So if you're an odd-numbered house, you would water on an odd-numbered day. If you're an even-numbered address, you can water on an even-numbered day. And it also restricts the timing of landscape watering to between 7:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. because watering of landscape, whether it's lawn or shrubbery, it's very inefficient during the height-of-day temperatures. You get a lot more bang for your buck if you're watering when it's not hot and not evaporating as quickly. And I just wanted to check my notes if there was anything else. I think those are the high points that we're recommending. I just do want to point out too that this does apply to not just residents who are on the town water supply, but because of state legislation, it does authorize the town to limit well use, private well use for irrigation of lawns and landscaping. And this past year, and Selectwoman Gilman can speak to this, but the legislature did modify it. Initially, that regulation only applied to residential private well users, but this past year, I noticed that the language has changed, and it now doesn't qualify it as residential. So the intention, I believe, was to allow that restriction to be applied to also commercial private well users. However, our town ordinance doesn't say that. It does say residential, and if we wanted to make a change from just omitting residential and then it doesn't limit it to just residential, it would be limiting it to residential, commercial, industrial, as far as landscape irrigating. But that would be another issue. I haven't made that recommendation. I only came across that late in my analysis Friday night, but that could be for future board consideration.
And Ms. Perry, just to speak to your point about the state regulation, it was a first step in going towards what you're talking about for a more comprehensive regulatory water restriction, but it was to get the conversation started that even though you have a well, you're affecting the same aquifer as the public water sources, so that the impact on us is actually equal.
Great. Thank you for that insight. I guess the last piece, I did want to bring your attention to the fact that since May 1st and until last Wednesday, we hadn't had any rain at all. Our water use, the demand on our water supply went up 44% in a month and a half. That's pretty remarkable. We don't usually see that radical of an increase, and that's the reason for the restrictions because most of this water increase is due purely to lawn watering. It's really remarkable. I think if people realized the impact that they're having, number one, on their own bills, number two, on a public resource, and it's a resource that we all share, I think people would probably be a little bit more conservative with their lawn irrigation. But we try our best to educate. I did include some additional information in the packet just for that reason, to try and encourage people to understand a little bit more about what is going on with water usage as far as what they can do for conservation, how they can reduce their own water consumption, and things of that nature.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'm just curious, would the increase in the usage of water also have anything to do with people being home for over three months?
I don't think so, only because we've been home or people have been home longer than just starting on May 1st.
True.
That's really kind of the beginning of the hottest time of the year and where people really are. It may be because they're home and they've done some great work on their lawns and their landscapes. That is a potential, but it's not your typical residential water usage increase because we would have seen that by May 1st.
Understood. Selectwoman Rontriolos?
Just anecdotally, I mean, and I could be completely wrong, I swear that every other person that I know of has purchased a blow-up pool if they didn't own one prior to this because of the town shutting down. So I don't know if that might also play into a lot of excess water use that we're seeing with kids being home, the weather being hot, people doing things like home pools, sprinklers, that kind of activity. So I don't know if, whatever the language is, but we need to, and I am guilty of it, we just bought a slip and slide, I am guilty of using more water than we typically would have since the town pool has closed. So I don't know how we also share that message to people about being conservative when it comes to usage outside of just, because my lawn is already dead as a doornail, so I don't bother watering it. But something to consider so that people understand that it's not just within the spectrum of watering your lawn.
So a couple of good comments there. One thing I'd just like to take as a teaching moment, your lawn isn't dead, it's just dormant. So it will come back with good rainfall and maybe you're even seeing a little recovery today.
It's very good at being dormant. Very, very good.
But yes, I agree. I think there is more pool usage at home. I know a lot of people do have smaller pools. This doesn't affect pools that are less than 100 gallons in capacity. You're still allowed to fill a small wading pool, so that's okay. And also watering for vegetable gardens, that is fine. That's not included in landscape watering technically. So that's just a couple of comments I wanted to add.
Selectwoman Gilman.
Ms. Perry, previously, a couple of years ago, we were distributing water, I wrote it down, water savings packets with the showerheads and toilet, whatever they are. whatever they are, for free if somebody came to Public Works. Do we still have those and are we handing them out?
We do still have a few. They'll be first come, first served. We are happy to be able to provide the few that we have left. I didn't tally those up. I'm not sure how many we have left. But they do, those water conservation kits do consist of one low-flow showerhead, and it's a high-quality showerhead. It's not like you just got air blowing on you. You will have good water flow under pressure. And it does have the toilet bank reduction flow. And I believe it has dyes for tracing leaking toilets and a couple of other helpful little pieces in there of information, too, about how to conserve water.
Yeah, I will say a few years ago, I did get one of those packets, and the showerhead works very well. Then I got new toilets, which worked better. And the other question, and this may be for Mr. Dean, is this something that we can put, when there's a drought declaration, to put on our webpage, sort of like now? We have the COVID-19 banner across the top to also have a drought restriction, water restriction banner, and/or attract people to use my Civics app by getting that notification right away.
So we can look at both of those things? If the board is inclined to adopt this recommendation by Public Works tonight, there's actually a notification requirement in the Ordinance 1610.6 that we'll have to give proper notice and advertise the restrictions in a newspaper. So the effective date will not, would not be tomorrow. It would be, you know, after that process is completed. Did you have anything else? Sorry, Russ.
No, that's okay.
Selectwoman Brown, did you have a question or a comment?
I was just gonna ask Ms. Perry if there's a strategy for like PSAs on the town website or channel, but it sounds like, it sounds like there's a lot of educational ventures already being taken.
As a matter of fact, we were, Mr. Glouacki had contacted me about putting out some kind of a quick informational video later this week just on this. We do have some information on our webpages, but they are a little bit buried, and maybe it's time to bring them to the forefront. In previous times, we put them up on the big billboards that advertise voting and now talk about social distancing. So we might want to, you know, bury the message of social distancing and, you know, don't water your lawn during the town.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Perry, can you explain just while we're educating people when we can feel like we're out of a drought without having to check if we are out of drought? I mean, like how many rainy days or how much downpour? I don't know how to say it, that somebody who's not familiar with how water is retained in the soil or whatever might have a different vocabulary.
Well, when the drought monitor does their establishing of water conditions, they're looking at several factors. One is soil moisture. The other is surface water. We got today, and I think it was last Wednesday or Thursday, we had a small storm. But we're looking at what the rainfall is upward in the watershed. It's not so much what's going on right here in Exeter. It's what's going on in the watershed, too. So and if you traveled west out of here throughout the watershed last, I think it was last Wednesday, when we had a pretty decent downfall in the way that we're noticing going into it. We do make it normal.
Okay, thank you.
So Ms. Perry, I was actually going to just ask that. Were the board to adopt 1610.6, is there a prognosis as to how long this would be in play? Or is it too early to tell?
It's too early to tell. The only forecast that I could get that looked to be rather dreary was the temperature forecast is predicted to be higher than normal. But the rainfall, they were saying it was equal chance of being below average, average, or above average. So the precipitation forecasts weren't very helpful. I think, though, the high temperatures, that's been another factor that's added to this scenario right now. It's really hard to say.
Okay.
It won't be in a week.
Understood. Several years ago, if I recall correctly, it started in August. Wasn't it sometime in August and went through into the fall, didn't it?
We had, in 2016,
Yes.
it actually had started earlier. It had started the previous October as far as abnormally dry conditions. And then a winter with very low snowpack brought us into drought conditions. I think it was in July or August. And the town did, we had to update our ordinances to be able to do the restrictions. That took a little bit of time. And so I think it was August when things finally were declared drought in Exeter and were going to water restrictions. That's correct. And we were in that for several months. I want to say it was the following spring before we were able to take it off. I don't remember the exact dates. I should have looked that up. I apologize.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Is anyone on the board willing to make a motion to adopt 1610.6?
Yes, I raised my hand. Mr. Chair, is there anyone from the public that's going to comment on this? Has anybody got their hand raised out there before I make my motion?
No one does.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I move to declare water restrictions at Level Two as defined in the Town Ordinance Number 1610.5 and 1610.6.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Do you want me to amend that motion to actually read what the restrictions mean? Or is it sufficient to just say which one we're referencing?
I think it should be described, don't you?
So you want me to read what they are?
If you would.
Yes. So, Mr. Chair, I'll amend my motion to include the water restriction Level Two definitions of landscape watering by odd-numbered addresses allowed on odd-numbered days. Landscape watering by even-numbered addresses is allowed on even-numbered days. And landscape watering shall not occur between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m.
And I will second the updated version.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Brown?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Perry, I think we have some other business with recommending three projects or approving three projects, payment of such?
Yes. There are two projects in your packet tonight that require your authorization. We have a memo from our Assistant Town Engineer, Jennifer Mates, regarding the West Side Drive Neighborhood Utility Planning and Preliminary Design. This was a warrant article this spring. It was $100,000 planning and preliminary design, looking at utility replacements in the West Side Drive neighborhood. I think most of you have heard that West Side Drive, we do have some challenges with inflow and infiltration. We have lack of drainage, adequate drainage for people to be able to discharge their sumps, too. And we had applied to New Hampshire DES for a Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund, which we were successful in getting a $75,000 loan with 100% principal forgiveness. So this is actually only $25,000 on, to use this to select, based on qualifications basis, the engineer for this project. We're recommending that this work be awarded, the design and plan, excuse me, not design, but conceptual design and planning work be awarded to Underwood Engineers. Again, based on their qualifications, they were our top-ranked firm. And based on that, we did ask them for the tasks and negotiated the scope of work and fee with them. And the amount for that is $97,600 for this work. This work would start right away and continue on this year. And then based on, we're taking a somewhat different approach from our traditional engineering approach. We're doing what's called context-sensitive design, and it involves a lot more stakeholder input. I think it's an interesting approach for a project like this. It's definitely not your standard type of work. We're looking at things like the road diet. I think I've mentioned that before, reducing the widths of the streets, improving sidewalks, providing better drainage. And it really, it being such a distinct neighborhood, it's important to get those people involved in the planning and conceptual designs that we want to move forward with.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend approving the design contract for the West Side Drive Area Utility Planning and Preliminary Design Project to Underwood Engineers for $97,600?
Second.
Motion in two seconds. Madam Clerk?
Hold on. Oh, I'm unmuted. I didn't even realize. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Brown?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Passes unanimously. And now we've got the Swamscott River Sewer Siphons and Webster Ave Pump Station Design Project, Ms. Perry?
Yes, and so this is our second project for your consideration tonight. Again, in a town meeting this year, the voters approved $1.6 million for the Swamscott River Sewer Siphons. There are two eight-inch sewer pipes that cross underneath the Swamscott River at the base of JD Hill that cross over to the main sewer pump station. They're adequate for dry weather flow and under today's scenarios, but there's inadequate capacity to add new connections or to be able to handle wet weather flows. And we do, unfortunately, on high rainstorm events, have sewer, sanitary sewer overflows at the base of JD Hill, which is really unacceptable. This will allow us to design the right capacity and additional siphons to go across the river. And it will also include the design for an upgrade of the Webster Pump Station. That would be a separate construction project. That Webster Pump Station would be a completely separate piece. But we wanted to get the design included with this because they are just so closely related. We need to have both pieces of that completed now. And similarly, we had issued an RFP, and we were looking at either Wright Pierce or Weston and Sampson Engineers, based on their experience, based on the proposals and, well, not the proposals, but the qualifications, explanation, and approach to the project. Wright Pierce was selected based on those qualifications. And we have been negotiating scope and fee with them. And their contract is $414,000, $414,600 for the design and up-to-bidding of the siphon project and just the design of the Webster Ave Pump Stations. And I should mention, I'm sorry I didn't before for the previous project, too, that both of these contracts have been reviewed by both Mitchell Group and Primex.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend approving the design contract for the Swamscott River Sewer Siphons and Webster Ave Pump Station Rehabilitation Design Project to Wright Pierce Engineers, Inc., for $414,600?
No move.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Brown?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the first reading of the Animal Control Ordinance Amendment. Selectwoman Gilman, would you remind me, do we need to open a reading, like a public hearing, or could we just go right into it?
I should know by heart. I don't, Mr. Dean?
I think you, I think you declare the first reading, right? Declare this the first reading of the Ordinance Amendment.
And then if we have comments, we can, if there are public comments, we can accept them, and maybe that will change how we read the ordinance the second time. So I will do the first reading. First reading of the amendment to Chapter Nine of the extra town ordinance amending Section 910, Section C, by deleting C in Gilman Park off Bell Avenue. Sorry, adding Section 910.1. Dogs are prohibited from the fenced-off, or fenced-in ballfield confines of the Gilman Park baseball field. Dogs are also prohibited from Gilman Pavilion at each location and shall, in effect on a year-round basis, 24 hours per day, shall be in effect.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up to members of the public. I'd like to give it just a moment. I see several hands going up. First, we have Dawn Jellie, and then after Dawn, if we could have Ms. Sermon back on the line, please.
Hi, this is Dawn. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening, Dawn.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your continued discussion of Gilman Park. And as you know, I've made a couple of comments at previous meetings, but wanted to take this opportunity to vote in agreement to your ordinance addendum and to just add a short comment saying that Exeter is in desperate need, as we know, of a dog-friendly park that's with easy terrain within walking distance of Exeter Town Center. And in addition, this ordinance supports and upholds the original intent of the park by the Gilmans and the trustees to remain people and dog-friendly. So I just wanted to vote and say thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Any questions or comments for Dawn from the board? Okay. Seeing none, we have Ms. Sermon next, and then Sally has her hand up.
Yes, thank you. I just, I know you have a big meeting. I just wanted to reiterate exactly what Ms. Jellie just said. She said it better than I could. The only quick sort of administrative question I have is, assuming this does get passed after the couple of readings, will there be signs to let people know that it is dog-friendly as opposed to just sort of a tacit way? Because if, I understand what the ordinance is doing, but then do you sort of want to, I don't want to say advertise it, but kind of let it be known by some sort of, you know, not huge signage, but just something that says that dogs can be here or can't be, kind of to basically state what you just said, so that they're not by the pavilion in the ballfield, but they are allowed, you know, in another spot. So that's probably down the road. But I just wanted to thank the board for considering this, and I think it was well done. We appreciate all your time on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sermon. Thank you, Ms. Sermon. Good evening, Sally.
I just unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could just give us your full name and address.
Sally Ward, 72 Park Street.
Thank you.
And I, I just wanted clarification of, so this ordinance means dogs would be allowed in some places in Gilman Park, but not others? Is that, is that correct? Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That's the way it's drafted.
So it is, it is, just as a former dog owner, but not a current dog owner, there, there is a deficit of places for people to take their dogs in town, and I think that's unfortunate. I'm done.
Thank you, Sally. And anybody from, anybody left in the public that would like to comment or opine? Seeing none, I'll bring that back to the board. And if there are no other comments or questions, then we'll have this on the agenda for the second reading on July 13th. In our last meeting, during public comment, we had Terry Harmon request that we put the sustainability coordinator on the agenda for tonight, which we have done. And just by way of history, very quickly, back in the 2019 election, Article 31 was a citizens petition calling for a sustainability office to be created in the town of Exter. And the warrant passed with over 60% of the vote. And though there was reference to an amount of money, $45,000, the wording of the petition did not call for raising an appropriate sum of money. Shortly thereafter, the board entertained members from an organization in town, SOA, SOA, as they call themselves, and they gave a very robust and very thorough and a very educational presentation on sustainability and what a sustainability office can do for the town of Exter. Shortly thereafter, the select board created an advisory committee, a formal town advisory committee, the Sustainability Advisory Committee, and at which time we interviewed, I believe, nine or 10 applicants. Seven were nominated and elected to, or appointed rather, to the, to the committee, which met in late July for the first time. I was, I was and still am the select board rep of that committee, so I'm very familiar with the origins of the committee and how they worked towards developing a job description at that time, and also discussing other initiatives that they hoped to accomplish both short-term and long-term. There were also requests from the select board that the committee put together a gap analysis to show again, short-term and long-term initiatives. And then by early October, I believe, the committee presented to the select board their final draft of what they thought a job description should look at, look like. Much like any new job descriptions or job requests, it first goes before the Budget Recommendations Committee, which this did in mid-October. I attended that meeting as a select board observant of the Budget Recommendations Committee, and they deliberated for a great deal of time on this. And I know that the subcommittee had spent a great deal of time meeting with the chair of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. At the end of the day, the Budget Recommendations Committee voted to not recommend money be put into the budget for this position. Moving fast forward to when the budget was presented, or the recommended budget was presented to the select board in December, the select board deliberated in public at a meeting and came up with an idea to, where the, where there wasn't, wasn't felt that there was money to put in the budget for a position at that time. We recognized the work that the town planner, Dave Sharples, was already doing, and much of that work fell into a lot of the job description. And a lot of the sustainability initiatives identified by the advisory committee were being done by Mr. Sharples or could be done by Mr. Sharples, along with an intern. Mr. Sharples was already in the process of applying for grants and has since applied for additional grants. So, sort of amount of money was recommended by the select board. Of course, the budget passed in March, and Mr. Sharples, since the beginning of 2020, has been working as the sustainability coordinator, if you will. And so that brings us up to the last Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting, where the committee voted unanimously to support the job description for the sustainability coordinator. Of course, the position has not yet been funded outside of the stipend and the additional roles and responsibilities that brought to Mr. Sharples. And again, the typical process for a new position would be going through the Budget Recommendations Committee, to the select board, ultimately to the voters when the budget is passed in March. And if the budget is passed, then the town manager starts to recruit for that position. Mr. Dean, have I missed anything? There you go.
No, Mr. Chairman, you've covered the process very succinct, very well. It's, that, that's what it is.
In your packet, you'll see some material that was submitted for the select board to review. And for those of us that were on the board last year, much of this was what was presented in part back in April and May, and I know that the new board members have reviewed it. So at this time, I'll ask if there's anybody in the public that wishes to comment to this or add to this or address this. And I see Sally Ward has her hand up. Hi, Sally, welcome back.
I'm unmuted now, correct?
Yes, you are. We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great. So Sally Ward again, 72 Park Street, and I'm part of that informal group, the Sustainability Office Advocates, who's been working on this for a while. So, a couple of points to make about where we are tonight from, from our perspective, which is, one, we feel like a great deal of work has already been done, and we don't want to come to the budget process again and reinvent the wheel. So, in terms of the job description, so our thinking is, can the select board entertain approving in concept the content of the job description so we don't have to revisit that come budget process time? We understand that the, the approval of new positions usually is, is synced with the description and the money going together to the Budget Review Committee, Budget Recommendation Committee. So our interest is, can we facilitate movement on that by going ahead and asking the select board to approve the job description? Because it's already been vetted, and it's, it's, it's pretty clear that folks on the Sustainability Committee think that it's a go. And the select board, from my understanding, back in October, thought, thought it was a go. So that's, that's number one. Number two is, it's wonderful that we have someone in, in Dave Sharples' capacity doing, doing this work, but as was discussed at, it was either the last meeting or the, the previous meeting, one of the things that, that Dave talked about was using the job description to sort of take stock of what he's able to do in his capacity, and what, what, what are the things that he can't do in his capacity? Not, not that he's not capable, but just there's only 24 hours in the day. So the concept of the Sustainability Office Advocates was, this is more or less a full-time position or mostly full-time position. And so, as much as we want to advance sustainability efforts and initiatives in town, we're, we're limited in how, how much we can do under the current circumstance. So, looking forward, I, I would hope that, and I think the Sustainability Office Advocates would agree, that we would hope that this would be put before the Budget Recommendation Committee again in the next, in the next round. In the meantime, is it possible, appropriate, we think it's efficient for the select board to say, this looks like a good job description. This is the one that we would advocate, or that we would, we would approve going to the Budget Recommendation Committee the next time around, so we don't have to revisit it, and as I said at the, at the beginning, reinvent the wheel. So I think that that's, that's pretty much our position. And, and I, we, we presented the documents that we presented tonight with the, the letter and the, the text of the job description as it currently stands, and the presentation that we gave last year to, in, in, for the benefit of the new members of the select board who weren't involved in that conversation that we'd had earlier. I'm done.
Thank, thank you, Sally. My recollection, and Mr. Dean and Selectwoman Gilman or Cowan, feel free to jump in, because I'm recalling back in September and October, early October, and it says here, October 2nd. I believe when this was presented to the select board, honor around October 2nd, before it went to the BRC, it was not for an approval per se by the select board, but it was the select board reviewing it with the committee for the wording of it to present to the Budget Recommendations Committee. And I understand, Sally, what you're saying, and not recreating the wheel, and I'm the first person that doesn't want to create additional work that doesn't need to be done. However, and I'm going to ask Mr. Dean maybe to, to jump in here, if the select board were to approve any draft, if a draft job description comes before the select board and the select board formally approves it, does a position in that labor grade then go into the, or does that have to be presented in the budget for the BRC? Or how does that typically work under other circumstances, Mr. Dean?
In my tenure here, Mr. Chair, we, we just haven't had that happen. We haven't had a job description added to the classification plan prior to going through the budget process. So I guess my short answer to you is that there's not precedent for it.
Okay.
I, so, it's, it's a hard question to answer that way because we just haven't done it. We haven't created a, a grade for a position, put it in the classification plan, and then said to the Budget Recommendations Committee, you know, we'd like your support to fund this. Just not, that's not our process, so.
No, and recalling the, recalling the all-day Budget Recommendations Committee meeting, where they went over the general government office, and this position was deliberated for quite some time, much longer than any of the other departments, rightfully so, because this was something new and something that was, there was a lot of material to cover, and the subcommittee did an incredible job really digging into this. I believe that the Budget Recommendations Committee last year had several requested positions. There was, I believe, one in the Public Works Department, and, correct me, Mr. Dean, I think that was the first request for additional staff in the Public Works Department in quite some time.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken. I believe that there was a request for personnel from the Fire Department, and there may have been one from one other department. So I think that when the, on the BRC, and having chaired the BRC for several years, I know that they look at each department item, but they also take a holistic look as to, okay, we have to look at all of these positions, what is in dire need now, and what can wait, or, or what can wait another year or two? And so my understanding of, after observing that meeting, was not that there was anything wrong with the job description, it was just looking at the budget, where we were with the budget, the other positions that were being requested, and, you know, trying to maneuver the numbers. And I'm certainly not going to speak for the Budget Committee. However, a member who spent a lot of time deliberating over this job description did go before the Sustainability Committee and, at their November meeting, and explained his thought process. And, and there was a good dialogue back and forth between he and the, and the rest of the committee. So I'm not sure that there's anything with the job description that is necessarily wrong or needs to be revised. I think it was just, you know, looking at the overall budget and where did this fit in or not fit in. And I think the select board took the next step on an interim basis, and I, I'm not, can't define interim as to how long, but recognizing the resources that we had internally and allocating some money that fit into the 2020 budget.
And I, I would add to that, Mr. Chair, I think the group or the, you know, the job description process this year is certainly ahead of last year. If you remember, right, the job description was sort of developed after the SAP was formed, and there, there was a, a smaller window. So it's pretty well established at this point what they're thinking about.
Correct. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that some of the difficulty in the last budget session was that there wasn't a description really of what this position would encompass. And so there's a lot of things that we really want to have happen, you know, we want to know information about this, we want to teach that, we want to coordinate this and that, and, which are all great things, and I, this job description is such a, a large step forward. But I think that's where the difficulty was, is that it just, how, how to justify the dollars for a position that didn't have a description. So I could see going forward with this, not necessarily adopting it, but if, if, when we get, the town manager presents his budget to us, that's when we have the discussion because it involves, you know, what step somebody's going to be placed at, that's when we need to talk about it in the budget. But now that, given this, I would say we have some good groundwork for making that recommendation of where does, what step and grade level does this position go under? Therefore, we need to budget this amount of money.
I would agree with that. We have several members of the public with their hands up in this order. Dan, if you could coordinate Terry Harmon, Sally Ward, and Gwen English.
This is Terry Harmon, 6 Oak Street.
Hi, Terry.
Hi. As a practical matter, I agree with the town manager that there's no precedent disallowing such a course of action. So we could go forward or have you all approve this job description. All the work has been done on giving what the Sustainability Coordinator would do. So the easy path, as a practical matter, is to approve this job description now, waiting for the finances to support it at some future point in time. Take this job description that so many people have spent so many hours on, and then when it comes time to merge it with the money that will fund it, if necessary, simply amend the job description, change the job description at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. I think Sally's next.
So I, I think that Terry just said basically what I was going to say, which is, what, what I think we want to not do is, is start the conversation about this job description over again when the time comes for the budget process. So our interest, the Sustainability Office Advocates, is, in concept, we want, we want to know if the select board agrees with the parameters of this job description in concept, knowing that the process is such that the, the job description and the budget asks go hand in hand. But we don't want to get hung up with re, with redoing the job description. I think that that's, that's, that's really what's in our interest, as, as Terry said.
Thank you, Sally. And we have Gwen English. Good evening, Gwen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I thank you for giving such a thorough review of the process that has been laid out thus far. I guess my one question is, and I certainly agree with everything that that Terry Harmon and Sally Ward have said. The one question I have, and, and maybe I'll make it more as a comment, but given that Town Planner Sharples is already undertaking some of the things that are in the job description, it seems to me that, that the job in, in, in a roundabout way has really been created and that he, he has this, this job description in place as a guide for him going forward. So in essence, it's already, it's already in the works. And, and granted, there are things that can be added, things that can, it can be fine tuned going forward. But I just, I would just be interested to hear what your thoughts are on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gwen. You, you kind of took a thought out of my head. Mr. Sharples is already doing a lot of what's in the job description. But again, to formally approve something or, or put this back in, or, or to, or to say, Dave, this is your job description as it stands now. That's a, it's a labor grade. It's nine labor grades. So now you've created that labor grade. Mr. Sharples is already doing a lot of what's in the job description. Number one. Number two, I agree with Select Woman Gilman that a lot of work did go into this and you've made some good points. And there's nothing from prohibiting Mr. Dean from taking this job description when he is preparing the budget in the next month or so. And I can't believe it's that soon, Mr. Dean. But that work has been done. And I don't think that there's should be real energy put towards reinventing the wheel. There's a job description that was presented to the Select Board back in October. It's, it's there. And again, we're not waiting until the last minute like last year. And innocently, because the committee really didn't start working on this until August. So to their credit, they put this together pretty quickly. But Mr. Dean has this right now to start preparing for the budget draft that he's going to give to the Budget Recommendations Committee. I think, Gwen, you hit the nail on the head when, when you said, Mr. Sharples is already doing a lot of this and he's, and he's the, you know, the coordinator working with the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And while I don't want to recreate the wheel and put any additional intense energy into this, perhaps through his efforts already and what he's going to accomplish in the next few months, he and the Sustainable Advisory Committee could probably revise this and make it even better than it already is. And that's all I would, I would add to that. So with that, I, I don't see any other comment from the public. I'll bring this back to the board for any further comment or questions. I see Selectman Brown has his hand up. Selectman Brown.
I just wanted to make sure we're looking at the economic opportunity here as well because as we look to the other end of this crisis we're in now, we're going to be in a situation where we'll be looking to court businesses to look at the town again. And having a role like this is something that would make us more attractive and, and just seem more intentional at attracting the kinds of businesses that fit with what we're trying to put together long-term. So I would definitely be in favor of, you know, reviving these efforts, approving this job description and then having Mr. Sharples merge it or redefine aspects of it. But it just shows, it's a nice way to recycle past work, but also to point, and I wish Darren were here. I'd have some questions for him in the economic development vein. But I think it's a strategic positioning for the town in a business sense for just future forward business opportunities. Thanks.
Thank you. Select Woman Gilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would echo what Selectman Brown said. The state, even given this COVID-19 emergency declaration saying no, no reusable bags at the grocery store, that's getting, it's going to be lighter or lifted soon. But there is an advantage to being seen as a town that has this, this level of interest and commitment to sustain sustainability. And I think that we should, you know, Mr. Dean should definitely be talking to the committee and to Mr. Sharples about what's in that job description because I know Mr. Sharples can't do everything that's on that list. And it's a great list of things. So prioritizing the essential duties might be something that they could work on because I see it like number four or five is, didn't write it down, but creating a plan basically that really should be at number one because you can't start operating on what you want to preserve until you know what your plan is for how to preserve it. And then there's the whole coordinating of all the other boards that I don't see, you know, I've tried to have that done or get that done just by the boards themselves getting together. And that hasn't worked out. So having a go-between would be great. It's a lot of meetings to go to for a 24-hour position. So these are the things that we still need to, I think, you know, make more finite and, and reasonable. I know that the committee and the SOA went through all of this and this is the typical things that they found or the most prominent, predominant things that they found in this position. So, you know, maybe we don't have a lot to reconsider, but we just need to, I think, have a look at it and, and then get ready for it at budget time. We can get ready. We don't have to define the step and the grade and step. We just need to have the position ready and then we can decide where to put it.
Thank you.
A lot of talk.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion to approve this job description?
I would, I will always entertain a motion. Selectwoman Cowan, did you have any comment before we?
I mean, I am, I'm remembering the amount of hard work that goes into, you know, writing this job description, making sure that we're certainly optimizing our efforts to be sustainable. And I think a lot of the stuff we're doing. So before, I mean, I, I, I've supported this since we voted on Article 31, but I also think that we need to be thinking holistically before we, the vote to support the job description, how, how the work that the town planner is doing, you know, what sort of things should stay under his jurisdiction? Because he deals with a lot of the stuff that, you know. So I'm just wondering if we have a chance to look at this more holistically, maybe have Dave on to talk about the efforts that he's doing. So I am leaning, you know, I have always been in support of, of making sure that we have this sort of position. I just want to make sure before we're, you know, that we're not putting the cart before the horse before where our finances are due to, due to COVID, you know, what, what sort of things are going to be happening. While at the same time elevating and making sure to use the resources that are available, which include the committee, which include Dave. You know, I just, I don't want to get in a position of, of like, well, you said you were going to fund, you know, you, we have a job description, so now we have to fill it and, and there's no money to fill. Like, I'm, I'm worried we're not going to be able to do anything, you know, so.
It's all, it's all good points. And, and Selectman Brown, before you make your motion, if I may, I, I'd just like to add, you know, I agree. I mean, I, I voted for section, Article 31. I actually spoke to it while I was running for Select Board. I've worked with the Sustainability Advisory Committee. I know firsthand the dedication and the hard work that they've put into this. There is a budget process. And, and I understand Ms. Harmon brought up that, as Mr. Dean said, this is unprecedented, which means that, you know, there's always a first time. But I do recognize there's a budget process. And I think that Selectman Brown brought up a good point that maybe it would be beneficial to hear from Mr. Winham from the economic side. And I agree with Selectwomen Gilman and Cowan that maybe before we approve something, Mr. Sharples can come in with some sort of an informal gap analysis and tell us maybe what we should be approving. And that's just, that's just my thought process. So if there are no other comments or questions, Selectman Brown?
I move that we accept the job description for the Sustainability Coordinator.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Well, second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second for discussion?
Reason that I'm not eager to do this, I, I appreciate the work. I appreciate what we're trying to do. I appreciate having this position is that I, I just think, and I understand trying to make this streamlined so that when we get to the Budget Recommendation Committee, we have a whole picture to present, which is, is what we're looking at here. I'm just not ready to make that commitment to that grade and step. So, and, and again, as we haven't, we haven't talked, I know the committee's talked to the town planner. Is that correct, Mr. Chair?
The committee, the committee, the town planner is part of the committee meetings and the chair works closely with him during the, the month till the next meeting?
Yeah.
If that, if that answers your question.
Yes, I, I just wanted to be sure that, you know, we would like to hear his input, but I wanted to be sure that he'd already had some.
Oh, he's quite involved.
Good. So I'm not ready to vote on this just because of the, it's more of a technical problem of where to put it. But we, now we have this description that's ready. So when it comes to budget time, then we can say, this is what we want that position to do and that's why we need this amount of money. I'm just not ready to take it.
I'm also not ready to take that vote. And I don't want it to, I don't want to, and I suppose that I could Robert's Rules of Order because I don't want to, and I don't think that we fall under this. But if we vote on something now and then it's defeated because of some of the reasons that we've talked about, can we then bring it back at a later date once we've had some of these questions answered? Because I know, you know, in the legislative process, you can't do that, right? Once a bill is killed, and I know it's different than a bill, but I just want to, want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves into some sort of bind here that we're not going to be able to undo.
No, we're not putting ourselves in a bind because when we get closer to understanding where this is going to fit in, understanding if we're even going to put it in the budget because of the expenses that we've incurred that we don't know we're going to recover because of the pandemic, we can, if, if, if this motion passes, there's always the, the tap, the way out is to make a motion to rescind that first motion and then replace it with a new motion. That's a very technical, far out there thing to do. We're not, we're not, we're not quite at that level that we need to do that kind of thing. Because the other aspect that we can do is if this motion fails, then further down, we can make the motion, only make it differently. Like by adding, you know, the date expected or the date we adopted or, you know, maybe we're going to end up changing some of the essential duties or, you know, education or something like that. So then we can do it by the date presented.
And I was thinking of the latter one.
Yeah, because I'm not, I mean, I have a lot of questions. I think that we can have, you know, I don't know what the next Select Board agenda looks like, but I think that this is something we should be talking about with Dave, who's currently in this role. I would like to get a bigger picture of what's been able to happen even despite the pandemic. I will, there is, I have some, some further questions and I don't want to tie my own hands or our hands to the board if we, if we don't accept it now to, to mean that we can't accept it at a later date.
We're fine.
Great.
Mr. Dean, a quick question. When do we expect to get some sort of an update from the Finance Director as to where we are, particularly after the, the taxes that are due July 1st?
Right. So we typically give you the quarterly financial report. The June 30th is about to close tomorrow, actually. So hopefully within a few weeks, I'm not sure we would get you something as soon as the 13th, but maybe by the 27th, we'd have a pretty good idea of what the June 30th numbers look like.
Okay. So where that's usually a robust presentation. And again, I, I'm looking ahead two weeks. I don't know what, what could come up that would be put on the agenda, but certainly I think we can find time. Both Selectman Brown and Selectwoman Gilman and Selectwoman Cowan made a, made a good point to have of Darren and Dave here to talk about the economic side as well as what Mr. Sharples has already done and what he envisions. I'm inclined to vote no on the motion, not because I'm not supportive of Article 31. I am supportive, I'm supportive of the initiatives of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. But as of June, as of June 29th, I'm, I'm not yet ready to vote to approve this job description and, and that's why I'll be voting no.
I have a question. Under what, what is it? Mr. Sharples is performing many of these duties now? Just under the goodness of his heart? Like what's the, under what?
No, back in, back in December, we, well, first of all, we looked at what, what was the town planner already performing? And we looked at this after the Budget Recommendations Committee voted to not recommend a full-time position or a part-time position for that matter. So when we looked at what Mr. Sharples was already doing, there was quite a bit of overlap. So that's why the Select Board back in December, when we first had the budget recommendation brought before us, voted to approve a sum of money to be paid to Mr. Sharples as a stipend. And he was formally given the title of, I believe, wasn't it Sustainability Coordinator, Mr. Dean?
Sustainability Officer.
Officer.
Would you accompany that?
No.
No, it's a stipend that was added to his regular wage of $5,000 annually to do.
Selectman Brown, what, what he was already doing, he was already working on applying for grants that were working towards making the town of Exeter sustainable. In fact, he'd already applied for and was granted one grant at that time. And the thought process was that in the interim basis, since he's already doing a lot of that work and where he was already the town liaison to the committee, that he would be working hand in hand with the committee to identify what initiatives were important to them to accomplish in 2020.
Okay, thank you. And was he taking on any additional responsibilities that went with the stipend?
Yes, the short answer. Yeah, he, he took on quite a few additional responsibilities, including the Coastal Resilience Grant, coordinating the Greenhouse Gas Initiative and the UNH grant application that brought us our current sustainability intern, among other things.
But it didn't, it did not change his job description?
We have not, we have not modified his job description though for Town Planner.
I believe when we approved increasing the duties and adding the stipend, it was on the condition that this was not a permanent position change. It was in, in an interim situation.
Correct.
Correct.
The increasing of duties was specific to grants? So they were named in the increasing of duties? Or was it just a vague, we're increasing your duties? Here's some money.
No, it was specific to, it was specific to the grants and doing a lot of the sustainability work that the town has undergone. There's a long list of different things that Mr. Sharples produced that he deals with, with respect to sustainability specifically. You probably haven't seen that, Daryl, but we'd be happy to get it to you.
Okay. You know, keep the motion live regardless, just to move this whole thing forward.
Thank you. Any other comment? Madam Clerk, will you take the roll call, please?
Yes. Selectwoman Roundtree Olus.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
No.
Clerk says no. Selectman Brown, sorry.
Aye.
And Mr. Chair?
Nay. Vote does not pass two to three. Mr. Dean, I'd like for July 13th, if we could arrange to have Mr. Sharples and Mr. Winham here to address those two matters and then, and then we can take it back into deliberation. For this is certainly, certainly not the end of this discussion. That's for, that's for sure. Thank you, everybody.
We'll set that up.
Okay. COVID-19 updates. I see we have. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Before we move on, oh, wait, maybe Terry Hardman left. I, she had had her hand raised and I didn't want to move on without time to give her to speak.
Well, I will send her an email and invite her back for the 13th. Thank you. I see a lot of town staff looking at me. Presumably you're all here for COVID-19 update. Mr. Dean, is there any order?
Why don't we start with Assistant Chief Pizon?
Great. Good evening, sir.
Thank you very much for having me tonight. I'll be trying to be quick. I know we're getting late here, so. Just some quick statistics. During the past two weeks since we met last, the state had an additional 320 persons tested positive for coronavirus. And of that, 38 on a daily average and three in Rockingham County. So Rockingham County overall is still looking pretty good to date, even though we were a hotspot early on in the pandemic. There was a total of 37 deaths during that time, five in Rockingham County. The majority of those still are in our long-term care facilities affecting our older population and those that are compromised. So still sad, but promising in that our numbers are coming down. Two additional Exeter residents have tested positive, bringing our totals since the start around March of '24, and we have five cases being currently monitored. So all things considered, not too bad. I will say our daily call volume and the ambulance, and initially we saw a significant decrease in our daily run volume. And as time has gone on, we're back to reaching eight to 10 ambulance calls daily. So we have seen that, that spike back in our daily, our daily run volumes. Personal protection equipment wise, we've been very fortunate. We have, we kind of saw this on the horizon early on. Were able to procure quite a bit of personal protection equipment. We did run short on some isolation gowns and the state was able to provide those for us so that we're, we're still looking good, no shortages. And I want to give an accolade to our health officer, to James Murray. He was able to, this past week, procure 6,000 masks in preparation for our municipal buildings reopening. So that is a significant amount that should last us a while, and I'm, I'm happy to report that. From an emergency management standpoint, we had put in for a total of $362,500 as part of a CRF municipal aid program. And I'm happy to say we received $345,859 of that request. So I think that is, is pretty impressive that we'd be able to, to recover some of those, those funds that were expensed during, during the pandemic so far. And the only other point we wanted to make tonight was, you know, the governor has promoted a safer at-home approach, and our numbers in our area are looking good. But I still wanted to enforce and emphasize the fact that wearing cloth masks when out in public or in those situations where you can't socially distance yourself is still important. And I think it's important to just point out, I've had a couple of questions in the last few days regarding mask usage, and I still find it's a disconnect as to why we're wearing cloth masks. And I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. The cloth masks that we're wearing today are not to protect ourselves from being exposed to somebody who's sick. It's to protect others in the case that we were asymptomatic or a presymptomatic COVID-19 positive patient. And I think that's really important to point out. You know, if you go to the grocery store, you're going into our local establishments, you're in an area on the sidewalks where you can't be six feet apart from people, that those masks aren't about protecting yourself, though there may be some inherent positives to wearing those. It is, it's about you protecting other people, and I think that's really important to point out and to emphasize. And until we get through this, it's something I hope that I see everybody wearing masks. And those 6,000 masks that James was able to, to obtain for us will go a long way in satisfying people coming into our town buildings and certainly our town employees. So that is all I have on that.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Pizon. Any questions or comments from the board for the Assistant Chief? Great, thank you. Mr. Dean, who's next?
Well, I think we can go to the buildings discussion next. I, I want to just, I just want to lay out for the board because we do have Mr. Bisson here and Melissa and myself. We don't have the library director, but we have been talking in recent weeks, more than talking, but planning for opening the building again to the public. And if the board is so inclined, we, we would, we would go and go forward with that on the 6th of July was a date that we were looking at. The library has been preparing ourselves. We have been preparing. Parks and Rec has been preparing. Obviously, it's a pretty big step with, with where we've been and where we're going. We've had multiple meetings. Mr. Murray's been involved in a lot of the preparations and the planning. If you can envision the town offices as an example, we've been in the processes of putting up signage. We have been instituting spit shields and additional protection for employees. The board has taken the position, you know, you'd like to see people wearing masks, although we know one of the challenges we have is enforcement of that. So we're going to make every effort to encourage mask wearing within the building. We, our employees are certainly amenable to doing it for, to provide service to the public, and, and we will do that. So there are a number of different things that we are pursuing to allow us to do this, but we think given, you know, given where the numbers are, given where, what's happening generally, that at this point, we can open. I don't think it'll be 100% smooth right out of the gate. I think we probably will have some hiccups. So we would ask for everybody's patience, and we're also looking at restricting. Obviously, we're going to put social distancing signage up and encourage people to socially distance. We do have a bit of a challenge with the downstairs area, the hallway. It's hard to sort of get around one another in that, in that particular space, so that's going to be a challenge. We are limiting the town clerk lobby area to no more than six people at a time. And, and again, James has been very good at diagnosing the, you know, the capacity requirements that we would be able to allow for and, and still operate. And the tax collector water sewer collections office is only one. So there would be able to have one, you know, one person in that vicinity at, at any given time. I think I mentioned, but we'll have hand sanitizer, and we already do at several places. We'll have masks available for people to be able to take. We are in a position, again, thanks to James' great work getting masks, we're in a position to be able to offer people masks within the building when, when they do come. And we are taking the tack that when we are meeting with members of the public, we should be, we should be in masks. And we are also going to use the Wheelwright Room and the NOVAC Room as sort of landing spots, if you will. So one of the things that we're going to be very much encouraging people to do still is use online services, use meetings with people by appointment. We're going to try to encourage that as much as possible to limit the foot traffic in the building. So that, that is, you know, that's what our plan is. And again, I don't think it'll be 100% smooth out of the gate, but we will, you know, give our very best efforts to implement it effectively. And it's just going to take a lot of communication amongst the staff, make sure everybody's comfortable or as comfortable as they can be while we work through those process issues. So that is the town office, and then the library has its own set of universal guidelines handed by the state. Oakadino and I have talked several different times. I think her big news was that she just wanted to let people know that they were going to open, going to open at nine instead of 9:30 a.m., just to give them time to wipe everything down. But then they're also instituting all of the different universal guidelines that were put out there for libraries. So they'll be doing that, involving masks with staff and so forth. And there are a number of different things that go with that. Parks and Rec, same, same way, basically following the town office plan, if you will, and going to keep people socially distanced and mask wearing, and same thing with meeting with members of the, the public and so forth. And again, encouraging neutral spaces, encouraging people to call ahead and also use online services as much as possible.
Okay. And the library is reopening July 6th as well?
That, that is their plan. Yes, that's my understanding.
Open to the public rather.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the board?
Yes, and any feedback you have from, for us, for me, any questions? This is, this is why we're having the conversation tonight.
Selectman Brown?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Dean, for all this. And I just wanted to sort of put this out there. It's my belief that masks are very important, but we're not a public health body or a medical body. So when possible, our languaging should really defer to the bodies specializing in this, government bodies that specialize in these areas, even whether it's local, state, or federal resources. But the danger of having an executive body of the town strongly urge things without contraindicators, we're, it's a slippery slope where this is a crisis time, but you want to lean on your actual specialists at the local, state, federal level and have our languaging reflect that. So I do sympathize that we're, we're hearing all this, every town's on their own. Well, we're not on our own. We do have local, state, and federal standards that we can lean on for our language. So like as we talk about the library opening up again, what language is the library using versus Town Hall? So I really would just encourage us to take, remember that we are just a branch in a wider government and to try to unify language that leans against specialists in our system of government. So that's it.
I'm sorry. So are we saying to discount what, what our, what our emergency management folks are saying? I, I don't understand.
No, I'm, I'm saying in reference to last week's, last session's vote, we're saying that the town of Exeter or that the Select Board strongly recommends, I don't think we're qualified to do that. I think our public health officials are. And our languaging in general moving forward should lean on public health recommendations that include contraindicators, and we should not be in a position as a Select Board to making recommendations that fall far outside of our level of expertise.
I vehemently disagree, and I feel very comfortable with what we passed. And I thank our emergency management people for all of the work that they put in. I thank our healthcare professionals, and I thank all of the people who are really strongly urging that we end this pandemic by listening to healthcare professionals. And we are the governing body of this town, so Assistant Chief Justin Pizon cannot, for example, issue a mask ordinance or anything like that. So we have to do it for them. So I'm happy to provide that voice and make sure that we are getting across that point.
If you don't mind me just saying quickly, is that I think that it's important to recognize the fact that, you know, we try to follow the CDC guidelines whenever possible, and we work hand in hand with James on a, on a daily basis. And any guidance we're providing to the board or the town manager is, is coming from the CDC office itself. We certainly aren't rogue and trying to come up with our own plans or our own interventions as far as mitigating this pandemic. And, you know, and I just think it's important to recognize that, well, I would certainly, and I know James as well, I'm not trying to speak forehand, but would never put something forward that wasn't recommended by our Centers for Disease Controls, for sure. You know, that's, I want to make sure we're aware of that.
And I, I would just, I would just comment too that, you know, I voted the way I voted at the last meeting to strongly suggest to people to wear masks, understanding that we cannot mandate it as the governing body. That has to come from the governor. And I certainly, absolutely respect your opinion, Selectman Brown. I'm just basing my opinion and my vote on everything that I've read, all of the CDC guidelines, recommendations from local and federal public safety officials.
I think there's a misunderstanding here. I'm not disputing any of that. Our language needs to reference those bodies and not, as a Select Board, we don't have the qualifications to make those recommendations. The people that you just heard from, we can, our language can say, based on the recommendations of our local public health officials, you know, it's a slippery slope when, anyway, I think I made my point. It's the specializing bodies that we want to reference in our language. That way, you don't have the library saying one thing, the Town Hall saying another thing. You have a unified voice where we are pointing to our local specialists who may be referencing CDC, but the languaging needs to be the executive. Well, the Select Board is not taking this authority on their own. We are seeking the advice of our local public health officials.
And just to be clear, there are communities that have mandated the public to wear masks inside municipal facilities. Portsmouth is one, Stratum is another. That actually has happened, and there is an RSA 4111A that would allow municipal governing authority to be able to do that. The issue that we have in Exeter is we have an enforcement issue. And that's really where we are looking at this particular issue a little bit differently, at least at our level. But we are going to encourage as much as we can. We do believe, and I, I just want to back Justin up and, and the public health and safety people that have said the cloth face coverings do contribute and help the situation. And we do want to encourage people to, to wear them and to take advantage, you know, to, to do that and help that be part of the solution. This is a holistic approach. Again, this is a, a new day when the public's coming back to the buildings, and we want to take as many, you know, as many good best practices and put them into place as we can to make sure that we limit, you know, we limit any possibility of the spread of, of COVID, and this is part of it. So.
Mr. Chair, I think to Selectman Brown's point, he's really just asking, and I agree, that we be consistent in our messaging. And I believe the, the town office building reopening guidelines do reference the CDC guidelines, and I don't remember if it was DHHS also, but, you know, so should the library, so should, I think the Parks and Rec is already doing it with the things that they do. Just let's be consistent is all.
No, agreed.
And, and that was a good point, and I believe that we are being consistent. That's been part of our process all along, is to make sure that we're as consistent as we can across the buildings.
Selectman Brown?
Have my hands still up?
Yeah. Okay. Any other further discussion or comment? Mr. Dean, is there anything you need from the board to facilitate the reopening of town offices to the public?
I think if, if the board is, is supportive, I don't think I need anything further from you. If you, if you have any concerns or there's anything that comes up, just let us know. But we, we would plan on opening to the public on July 6th. And just, just to be clear, just so everybody knows, because sometimes it gets lost in the translation, we have, of course, we have been working since March 18th, and everybody has been working. And it's just that the public hasn't had access to the building. So this is the change, that the public will have access to the building. And we appreciate, appreciate people's patience and working with us through the issues.
No, and thank you for saying that, because, you know, town offices have never closed for operational use. They've been closed to the public. This is a reopening to the public. And correct me if I'm wrong, other than some of the parks being closed for spell, I don't think any town services went uninterrupted, did they, or interrupted?
No.
Okay. Anything further? All right.
I also, Nico, if I could, I just want to thank our employees as well while we're at it, because I know this has taken a lot of effort by a lot of different employees of the town to bring this together. And we've got some great people that have really worked hard on this. So everybody is rowing together. We know we're in the same, we're in the same boat. We're all going to be in it together, and we're going to work hard to, to try to make this work as best we can. But behind the scenes, there are a tremendous amount of people that have really helped out with this. So both in the town offices and some of the people you're seeing on the screens here, they've been great.
Great. Thank you, and all their efforts, we certainly appreciate it. Mr. Bisson and Ms. Roy, you're still hanging around. Do you have a Parks and Rec update for us?
Ah, yes, Mr. Chair. This was-
Ah, yes, Mr. Chair, just want to give you a quick update. The Care Kids program is still at 27 participants. The great news is we did qualify as an emergency childcare with the state of New Hampshire and received a good supply of cleaning supplies, PPEs from the state. And we're hoping to get some financial assistance as well to assist us in pulling off the Care Kids program. And that's really so far all I have. Just wanted to let you know.
How about the the movies and the concerts?
Oh, yes, I guess. Movies and concerts have been outstanding, actually, following the guidelines for drive-ins. We've sold out the last two weeks. We're almost selling out week three, which is actually the following week. We're not having one on July 3. So if people are looking for a movie, we'll be home with our families celebrating July 4. The concerts have been well received as well. It's been really good to get live music out there and people we are averaging about, I'd say, 85 to 100 people for the concerts and all 50 cars, well, 45 cars now for the movies. So they've been very successful. I got to give thank you to the SAU. Dr. Ryan and Rusty Lister have been outstanding to work with. I mean, they constructed a stage for us for our concerts. They had it in storage. They had to rehab it, but it looks great. They painted it the other day. So it's it's coming together and having access to that facility has been really great. And I can't appreciate it enough. They're also letting us use Lincoln Street School as a rain site for the Care Kids program. So we have a nice rain site, which will have access to a couple of classrooms, have some storage space in there. So we'll be prepared for inclement weather. So we are we're we're going great with the SAU and we're very excited for it.
Great. And there's still room left in the Care Kids program for folks need?
Yes, we can take up to 45 kids. So anyone that is really desperate, we we just got to keep more people registering. Right now we have about five in each group on the waitlist waiting. So we need a few more to be fiscally solvent to open it up for the next round.
Good to know.
Okay. Ms. Roy, we can't go without hearing from you.
So we have been putting our primary focus on our special events and our Care Kids program, but something exciting that's gonna hopefully be starting in the middle of July is we are creating a traveling senior center. And I actually was on the phone communicating with Water Street today. And what we've done is we have purchased, and they'll be delivered soon, 28 folding TV tables and folding chairs that we have from the rec. And we're going to throw them in the back of the van. And I'm going to start with Water Street, hoping to go to Sterling Hill and some of the other places. And we're going to go play bingo outside. We got some clip on fans for them and other events to try to just bring some socialization and fun things for them to do in a safe way because some of that population is very scared, some of them not so much, but some very much. And I think Tony said in his email today, oh, my goodness, my my clients will be so excited. So we'll be starting to see that and hoping for good weather that we can continue that in through the fall before it gets too cold to do some fun stuff with our seniors.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions for Greg and Melissa? Comments? Great. Thank you both.
Mr. Chair, can I just bring up the farmer's market?
Please. Yes.
Yeah, that's another thing on the to do list. I know, in fact, I see maybe Dorian Barr from the farmer's market is actually watching the meeting. And I know that they're interested in going back to the Parkway. So
Well, that's a good question because I thought under the COVID-19, we also as a board had voted through the end of June to close the Parkway to vehicular traffic. So we need to make a decision on whether there's an appetite to have continue to have that closed. And maybe we have that discussion before we discuss the farmer's market. I'll open it up to the board, you know. I would be willing to entertain maybe keeping it closed through Labor Day.
I agree. I just think that aren't we adding in the extra effort then at that point of moving it, moving the barriers every week for the farmer's market? I don't know what kind of effort is involved in that.
So we, if I might, so we looked into that issue. And my understanding is that people that are using Swayze Parkway for events, if there are to be had, can move those barriers. They're not filled. So they are easy to move and they would do it because I know Selectwoman Cowan had that issue about. She brought up the issue of how much is staff going to be required to do and raise that concern. It was a good concern. And that's what we followed up and were told today that people can move them that are part of the events.
Okay, I just I'm throwing it out there that I guess I'm not understanding how that would be different than the team event that we were talking about earlier in the meeting in terms of numbers and spacing and the such.
But I think you make an excellent point. But before we got there, I was wondering if the board had an appetite to extend closing the Parkway to vehicular traffic.
I think I think closing it to vehicular traffic is a good idea until Labor Day and and, you know, perhaps beyond. But I I felt that way from the get go. But I'll leave it at that since that was your question of the of the.
I thought we'd start there. And then I want to get back to whatever the farmer's market is going to request. And I would agree with you. I mean, if you've got, you know, if you've got you know, somebody coming in on a permitted, that there's no difference between keeping one socially distanced and not the other. I completely see your point there. But first, do we how do we feel as a board about extending the closure of the road to traffic until through Labor Day?
I'm supportive of that. I would make that motion. I'll move closing the Swayze Parkway to vehicular traffic through Labor Day.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Roundtree Oles.
Hi.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Chair says aye, Mr. I did it again. You had taken your power away. Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
I say aye, passage unanimous to keep the roadway close to vehicular traffic through Labor Day. So then that brings us back to conversation from earlier. We have a we have a permitted function for July 11, which is on a Saturday, which I think had been approved when it was originally June 27. And I you know, other than it coinciding with another event, I don't see any reason, given the governor's order, that we would change that. But I open that for discussion. And I think that we need to I'm not sure, and I'm thinking aloud here, you know, that's the permitted events on a weekend, I think differ may differ than something that's regularly scheduled every Thursday. And I think our initial concern with the farmer's market when we moved that relocated them to Tuck was because of a, the social distancing between the vendors and how would that interfere with other people that are using the park? But now with the new phase of the of Governor Sun, that may have changed. So maybe you know, maybe it's time to revisit the decision on farmer's market. So I'll open that up to the board and maybe bring the farmer's market into the conversation at this time. Danish is, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Dean.
Yeah, one thing, Mr. Chairman, to consider too, is keep in mind that Mr. Murray has worked very closely with the farmer's market on the version of of it, if you will, that's over at SST. So the extent that any modifications are being made to that, it would be probably good discussion to have as well.
Good suggestion. Before we bring it back to the board, does the farmer's market representative wish to comment? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dorian Barr. I am at 143 Dials Road in East Kingston. Do I have permission to talk?
Is that the consensus of the board?
Yes.
Thank you. As a member of SGA, I would like to petition the town to let the farmer's market resume our permit to hold the farmer's market at Swayze Park.
Beginning immediately or?
We would like to we can move whenever you say that it's okay for us to go.
Okay. Comments from the board?
I think I'd like to hear from Mr. Murray about the coordination that took place there.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, so I've been working with the farmer's market at the Tuck campus. For the first few weeks that were set up there, I was able to go down there and observe how they were able to operate within our guidelines. And from what they were able to do there, it's in my opinion that they could operate it just as safely at Swayze Parkway. They they were able to operate within our parameters. And they did a really great job of being able to set up and, you know, conduct business in a safe manner.
Thank you.
Dorian, did you have a date in mind that you wanted to move to to the Parkway?
We would like to move this. We would like to move as soon as possible if that is in agreement with you.
Okay. And Mr. Murray, would there be any time that would be needed to make this work? Or could it be seamless if it were done soon, if not immediate?
I think it could be seamless. I can work with the farmer's market group and, you know, be down there to work with them as soon as possible.
So if the board wished so as soon as this Thursday, or would you rather wait a week?
I'll go out there. I'm okay with this week.
I was actually asking Mr. Murray if he would prefer a week, but.
I have no preference.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question before we vote on this. So James, what is your opinion based on the traffic that we're seeing down at Swayze Parkway? It's been certainly increased since, you know. And what are we going to see in terms of, I mean, I I want to be supportive. I want to make sure that everybody's doing the right thing. And I'm also terrified of of large groups gathering because we've seen, you know, we've been really lucky in this but I don't, I I mean, I think it's luck. And I don't think it's I don't think it has anything to do with the fact that the virus can't or won't come here and spread in a significant way. So I'm curious about your opinion based on this traffic that you're seeing at Swayze Parkway, how that can integrate there.
Right, perfectly understandable. I think you know, given the traffic that we experienced at the Tuck campus and how the farmer's market was able to kind of stop people at the gates, I'll say, and conduct a flow pattern. And, you know, down to each stall having spots laid out where people can be in lining up, having a traffic plan around all that. I think they could easily make up some sort of traffic plan to work around the traffic flow already at Swayze Parkway. From what I saw down at the Tuck campus, they were very effective in being able to mitigate that risk anyway, in terms of people gathering or bunching up. It seemed to flow. It seemed to flow pretty seamlessly there. I don't see why they couldn't at Swayze, given what they showed at Tuck Campus.
And I guess the other question that I have, and this is this is maybe a question for Dorian, but you know, I think what is, and this is this will be anecdotal information that you're seeing, but do you see a large a large number of your participants wearing masks? Because I also think, you know, the thing about seeing somebody in a mask prompts you to wear a mask. And so like if we're modeling good behavior and, you know, and and what we want to see, maybe this maybe moving it to downtown is a good thing in terms of setting social, you know, social norms and expectations.
Hi. As far as the farmer's market, we provide masks for everyone who wants them. There were two people last Thursday that chose not to wear the masks. Everyone else is in a complete agreement with grabbing the free masks if they don't already bring them. But most people really do bring their own masks.
Okay, because I've seen some compelling research that says, you know, when you see that somebody else is in a mask, you are more likely to wear a mask. So I can see this, you know, sort of encouraging encouraging, you know, mask wearing downtown, which which would be a positive thing.
Selectwoman Rocktree Oles?
Just a couple of quick points. I think there will be a difference from what we're seeing at Swayze versus, I mean, what we're currently seeing at Tuck versus what we will see at Swayze. That's a destination location for the farmer's market. Swayze is going to be a combination of a destination and also, oh, I just happen to be in town walking because that is an open area to walk. So I think we need to take consideration of that. Especially when we're talking about doing events down in Swayze Parkway, I see them as very similar. So my my request personally would be to give ourselves at least an extra week to map out exactly how that's going to look in Swayze Parkway. Are you going to have all vendors on one side of the street versus two sides so that traffic can flow a little easier for walking? You know, are you going to mark out spacing so that people who are standing in line? Because I remember from previous years when you're in the farmer's market that, you know, people tend to get a little close because they're waiting to see what am I going to buy while you're purchasing? So these are the things that I would like for us to do in preparation if we are going to move it back to Swayze, because I think the number of people who will be in attendance is going to be a lot higher than what you're seeing over at Tuck. Something that we should think about. Other than that, I'm I'm fine if, you know, moving it. I just want to make sure that like with everything that we're talking about, that you just don't rush into it without having a planned place and making sure that everything is set up so that we do it right. And then we don't have to go back and make changes afterwards.
I'm inclined to agree with you. I think an extra week would allow the market to work with Mr. Murray, much like the restaurants did, and make sure that we have a safe plan.
When we had originally discussed going to Swayze Park back in May, we were looking at having all of the vendors on, if you enter the park from downtown on the left hand side of the street with two spaces with a car and a tent, and then two spaces six feet apart for waiting so that you could have a total of three people waiting. And then an external exit, which would be the sidewalk between the roadway and the river. So we would have a flow going from downtown through the market, and then everyone would be exiting on the outside.
It's just gonna, I'm just hopping in really quickly. It's going to require extra effort because people are used to walking in Swayze Parkway in a certain way. And so adding this for one day of the week will require, whether it's an additional volunteer or two, just kind of guiding people as to where they walk because it's been open thus far for the last few months for people to walk freely. I think, you know, yes, you hope that people just follow the rules if you make a sign. No, that's not likely to happen naturally. So just as long as we can set it up in place, at least the first couple of weeks, where perhaps you have people who are directing people in the right way, I think that's a that's the safest bet that we can go about it because one day a week, it's going to be different than what they're used to every other day of the week.
We do provide two market managers for our Portsmouth market. So we are accustomed to working together. We have communications for the person at the front of the market and the person that's at the booth. So we're able to So we're able to negotiate kind of guidelines so that people follow directions and a lot of the vendors are used to the one-way path from SST. So the vendors will be good at determining how the people will flow as well.
Presumably there'll also be an increased number of folks there because it's been closed for three months and people have been accustomed to using it for fresh air or recreation or exercise. So, you know, you have to take into consideration there will be people, presumably will be folks there that are not there for the market. Any other comments?
I just had a question for Officer Murray. Is that something that's gone into your thinking about the timeframe? Like the flow of the non-farmers market customers or travel?
I haven't considered the, how much of an increase the traffic flow would be. It's something that I will work with the farmers market with and, you know, I'm more than happy to be down there with them for their debut at the Swayze Parkway. It's just something we'll probably have to monitor and given how much space, you know, they plan to take up, we might have to look into limiting the number of people in the market itself. But again, I'm not sure what this will mean for traffic flow. We'll have to look into that more.
Thank you.
Any other comments? And I don't see anyone from the public other than Dorian. Dorian, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I really appreciate the town taking the opportunity to look at this. I appreciate all the time that this conversation has involved. I thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you also for running the market. Things are going really well and, you know, of course, we want our, our farmers market, our people to have fresh and healthy food, our local farmers to do well. So I appreciate your.
And I'm glad it worked out so well so far at Tuck and that was, that was a great location and I'm glad the town was able to work that out with you. Wishes of the board? I'm happy to entertain a motion if.
A move that we seek to open farmers market next Thursday, July, whatever that is.
Can we edit that? Oh, what are you thinking, July 9th?
9th, I'm sorry.
Is that enough time? James, is that enough time for you guys to map that all out?
Yes, absolutely.
Is a motion to allow the farmers market back to the Parkway effective July 9th? Is there a second? Is a motion a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select one, Roundtree Olaf. Select one, Callan.
Aye.
Select one, Brown. Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, passes unanimously. Request of James. James, I think you said that you would, you would be happy to attend the first market back at the Parkway on the 9th.
Yes.
If you're willing to do that, could we have you back on the 13th to give us an update as to how it went?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Dean, anything else on the COVID-19 updates?
Just, there were two things I just wanted to bring to the board's attention for you to read. One is the, there's a new executive order number 56 that came out and it's a modification of procedure relative to appropriations and tax payments. So I know one of, one of the things that it allows communities to do is enter into agreements with property taxpayers for payment of taxes on an agreed-upon schedule. So that is something that's new and also the reduction in appropriations is something that's new as well. I don't think we're aggressively looking at that right at the moment because we've done some work on that front already, but we will be back with the board, like I say, as the fiscal year progresses. We'll be back to you with obviously a revenue update, trying to get finalization on things like meals and rooms tax and what does that look like? And so forth. But just wanted to make you aware, that's a new executive order that just came out last week. And then the other one is the safer at home order, executive order number 52, which talks about the state of emergency and that runs through August 1st. So just two, two of the more significant orders that are around to, to look at.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, before you leave, circling back to public comment. When Mr. Ruffner was on, he indicated that one of the reasons other than the weather obviously was not favorable last Saturday, but he needed additional time to allow the vendors to adhere to all of the guidelines. Have those been met yet?
The food vendors have turned in their certifications that I asked them. Yes.
All right. So there are no outstanding issues?
No, not this time.
Good. Okay, thank you. Before we get into regular business, any other comments or questions from the board?
I have a question, Mr. Chair, on that last, that last one with the festival on the 11th. We, we actually had to vote to extend that application from its original date to the 27th or whatever it was. Do we have to vote on changing this one too? And then my further question is, has it been as planned out with our health officer as the farmers market has? And what was the last thing? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not against having it. I just, I'm not clear on how, what the setup is.
So I think you're right. I think we should formally vote to the new extended date as a matter of procedure. And Mr. Murray, I'd be interested in also hearing the answer to Select Woman Gailman's question.
As far as logistics go, no, it has not been planned out as much as the farmers market. The farmers market, I've had time to work with them and to attend a few markets to work out any kinks. Obviously I've not had that chance with a type of event like this. Mr. Ruffner has been working with me in terms of the general idea of our application and making sure he understands what would be required, but I have not seen anything logistically as to how those requirements would be met at this time.
How then do you feel comfortable, do you feel comfortable recommending that we move and change the state?
It's hard to say. This is a very fluid situation, you know, when it was originally planned for this past weekend. You know, if you would have asked me last week, things were looking okay, but I've heard of three states now. Florida, Texas, and Arizona are now reclosing restaurants and cases are spiking. We're not Florida, Texas, and Arizona, but things are changing on a daily basis and I just want to be prepared if things do get worse around here that, you know, we're ready to make some changes.
Let's, let's also just be very clear about some of the information that we're sharing right now. A lot of the numbers that we're talking about are stemming from restaurants that opened and people were eating indoors. So we're talking about bars, we're talking about indoor socialization. We're not talking about outdoor group activities nearly as much as indoors. So before we go ahead and start making big statements like that, we ourselves should do some vital research and make sure that we're not just making a blanket statement. Because if we're going to do that, then we need to consider the farmers market. We need to consider outdoor restaurant seating. We need to consider everything. Right? So let's not just choose one particular event that is following the regulations that we've set forth, that the governor has set forth and make that an example that we're no longer going to abide by the, the, you know, the agreement that we've made. What we can do, like I mentioned earlier, is we can say, here's what we know, here is what we would like to see, and here are the protocols that we're setting for us to make this event a safe event for our community. The same way that we're asking the farmers market to do that, which is why we're extending it by a week before we bring it back to Swayze Parkway. So.
I know, but I think that there's a difference because, you know, the farmers market had a plan in place to open at Swayze Parkway. So they did, you know, they did the spacing, they, they explained to us the mask protocol. And they've explained, you know, a number of things and, and they've also, you know, had however many weeks over at the Tuck library to say like, this is what's working, here is what we've done, we're working with the health officer. And we, I mean, we're still under emergency orders.
Right. And if, and if those emergency orders change prior to that date, then I think we have the, we have that ability to then make changes as we see fit. I mean, I would assume if the governor all of a sudden makes a change in what we're capable of doing, then we will go forth and make changes that are necessary. I just, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with saying this works in one setting and it doesn't work in another. I think we have the ability to set forth a plan so that we can attempt to have an event that will work like we've had other events thus far, whether it be, you know, drive-in movies where there's still somewhat proximity and people are within the same area and it's outdoors. The farmers market. And I do think that moving the farmers market to Swayze Parkway is going to increase the number of attendees. You know, because there will be both the shoppers and the people who are used to walking on the Parkway. Some of those people are masked, some of those people are not. I've gone down there at least, you know, two times a week. So let's just be very clear and I think proactive and make the point of what we want these kinds of events to do. That's how we make sure that they are safe versus just saying we're not going to do them at all. So I, I think the conversation should be, James, what do you think needs to be done and what conversation needs to be had with team? So that they set up the proper event. And like I said earlier, if it's limiting the number of people who can enter the Parkway, if it's setting up more volunteers who can hand out masks, tell people that they need to separate, whatever that is, we have until what, July 11th?
So. So you get something interesting before when we were talking about this and you just brought it up again. So we have a plan to maybe and we have a plan to limit the number of people, but how? Who is enforcing that? How is town staff going to be, you know, in or in, you know, are we going to say, well, you can only have 50 people on the Parkway doing this? What if there's 51? Does that mean that, that we're calling the police? Like who is enforcing all of this stuff? And I feel like I don't see a plan with all of these questions answered before I am voting on something that is, that is, you know, potentially drawing a large number of people here where, you know, a lot of states are saying, if you're coming from these states, you have to be quarantined before you can even come in here. So while I, you know, I hear your point about not, you know, and I hear Darrell's point about how I'm not an expert on all of this stuff. But I'm also reliant on what is happening from other states.
Are we concerned? I just want to be clear. Are we concerned that people from out of state are coming in to party it up at the Swayze Parkway?
Are we, are we sure that they're not?
No, no, I'm asking because I'm not, I'm not sure what, what, what the, I'm, I'm asking because I'm not sure, because it seems like that's what's being mentioned. But I've, I've attended this event.
Do we, do we know that they're not? Like, and I don't want to be in a, in a circumstance of saying, you know, oh, are you from Massachusetts? Well, are you from northern Massachusetts or are you from the Berkshires or are you from Boston? Like which part of Massachusetts are you?
I'll be honest with you, and this may be just a simpleton sort of comment to make. I don't know where these people are going to park to walk all the way down to Swayze Parkway. We, we like literally, physically speaking, where are all these people coming from?
I want these questions answered before.
No, I understand, but history has shown and I've also gone to this event for multiple years, it's not that kind of party.
Like I want, I want to, I want to support our local artists. I want to support our people. I want to make sure we're being safe and responsible and we're still in an emergency management pandemic like.
I agree. I agree. So let's, let's set the standards on what safety is. Let's do that.
We are permitting something where there hasn't been time to say, okay, we're going to have this many people and, and no more. These are the people who are going to come and, and say, you know what, you've been here for five, five hours now, you've got to go. Like, I want to know the process for all of this stuff.
If I could jump in, maybe, maybe Melissa, I think you had your hand up, maybe the permitting, people required with the permitting could, could weigh in and I don't know if you have the answers, but maybe you do.
So if it's okay, I'm going to actually defer to Greg because Greg has been working with Scott and I do think he has.
Well, that's fine. I thought you had your hand up, sorry.
Sorry, no, that's okay.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually, for, to lovey, we did put together, working with Russ and James, a thorough checklist. Checklist is seven pages long that they need to adhere to. Goes, it does go back to the enforcement, who, who's going to enforce it. We are taking that they're, they're going to follow the guidelines we're laying out. And to James' point, it is in flux as we look at what we gave them. Literally the same week that came out, the governor's task force put out festival guidelines and fairs. So adapting those guidelines and what we're requiring is going to be something where we're going to have a site meeting with teams to go over the plan. But they need to submit all the paperwork as well. So that's something they need to do and get that on top of us because they need to have a communication plan because one of the first things that pops out in the governor's task force guidelines is, what's their communication plan if there's a positive COVID hit? How are they going to notify people?
I am, I am 100% behind that. I think what we do is we set the guideline, just like you said, Greg. Like, we say, this is what the expectations are, this is what Plan B is if there's a change in protocol. This is what happens if C, you know, like, I'm not one to panic. I'm one to plan, see things through and then make a decision based on what we know. So I think what we do and what we've done thus far for every discussion that we've had during the pandemic is, what would we like to see? How can we make that happen? What things do we need to provide? What things do they need to provide? Have they done that? If so, then yes, we can go forward. If not, then the event doesn't happen.
If a member, we have a member of the public that wishes to speak at some point.
So I am going to unmute them in just a moment if they could just say their name and address.
Hey, this is Scott Ruffner, once again, 11 Hall Place in Exeter.
Hi, Scott.
Hey. So again, just some confusion here and, you know, and I thought I was done with having to constantly defend our organization and our events, but we comply with everything we're supposed to comply with. I've worked with everybody within the town and I take offense to the fact that some members of this board aren't doing their homework and we, and I have to call in at 10 o'clock at night when I'm working with every person I'm supposed to be working with. And this is all fluid and it's fluid for me as well. And when we do events, we submit more accurate and detailed maps than any other organization, including when the town does an event. And so we need to know who our vendors are going to be before we submit the map. And it's always very detailed. The town knows exactly who's going to be at what place. We work with James, we work with Greg, we work with Melissa, and we always submit and give you guys exactly what you're looking for. So to sit and listen to you guys discuss the farmers market with none of the issues and then you turn around and, and our event is under a different level of scrutiny. You know, it's just, it's very disheartening, you guys. It's very disheartening.
My only comment is that for all of these events, we're going to rely on our health officer as much as we can to make sure that the events themselves are following the proper guidelines and that's really the bar that we've set. So do the.
Yes, I understand that, but someone, someone should have stepped in. I'm, I'm getting all of these things from you guys in real time and, and I'm always ready for it. So I, I don't appreciate, I don't appreciate it that someone is acting as if I haven't submitted something that you've asked of me when it's very fluid. So someone should. I haven't submitted something that you've asked of me when it's very fluid. So someone should be on top of this with the town. And someone should step in and not allow people to be made to look like they're not doing what was asked of them. That is the problem.
Nobody is doing that, my friends. Nobody is doing that.
Because it's not, it's not a personal thing. It's not. So let me, let me just say this. This is where it feels, you just
It feels very
Unfortun And I don't know, unfortunately.
I'm not. So here's the thing, like when you say somebody isn't doing your homework, like you're talking about me, which is okay. Um.
Well, you know what, you know, if I may, I'm sorry, select woman comment. I want to interrupt for a second. Um, I, I don't want this to get personal because there's no need for it to get personal. And Mr. Ruffner, um, I think everybody in this town wants to work with you as best we can. This is a fluid situation. And it certainly is not personal for where I'm coming from, but I vigorously object to you suggesting that a member of this board hasn't done homework. I, I just, I, I find that personally insulting. Because this select board does its homework. We conduct our meetings having done our research. This is a fluid situation and frankly, you were good to go for June 27th and you postponed your event partially due to weather and then partially due because you wanted to allow your vendors extra time to get ready. So I'm kind of seeing a little contradiction here. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. Please let me, don't interrupt me quite yet. Please let me finish. Uh, nobody has accused you or anybody else of not doing what they should be doing. I believe Mr. Beeson and Mr. Murray was saying that the situation's fluid. They've come back to you with whatever it is they've come back to you. I still don't know what it is they're missing, if anything at all. And, and we're trying to get all of the information so that we can make a motion to perhaps approve this as we did for the June 27th event. So sir, please, with all due respect, can we not keep this personal? And I'm going to ask the board to do the same. We're working, we're working here with you. It's not only a resident and a citizen. You're the executive president of this organization, which is a nonprofit that's historically done a lot for this town. I just, I, I'm not going to have this be personal.
Well, I couldn't agree with you.
Let's take a second for a second and, and Mr. Beeson, I, I'm not sure if you finished talking. Is there anything that's outstanding that needs to be done that the board needs to know about?
Uh, working with Scott, he just has to submit the checklist that we provided him along with uh, his communication plan. And I think we'll have a site walk. We have public works. Uh, Mr. Murray will be there as well as uh, police and fire just to go over some details and, and the detailed plan. But that hasn't been scheduled yet. So once he moved it, we had it rescheduled. We plan a rescheduling later this week, if not early next week.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Is there anything outstanding from your perspective?
Uh, I just need an event coordinator's um, application as well.
Okay, back to select, go ahead, select woman Gilman.
Uh, I just wanted to um, remind people that we're, you know, the governor's executive order for festivals just came out. Um, I'm not executive order, yeah, executive order. Um, and this is the first festival that we have uh, coming up before us. So uh, we do have questions. We're kind of imagining things. Um, the Parks and Rec Department, our health officer have a process in place. We don't see it because it's their day, day job. It's what they do. Um, so on their recommend, I would go with their recommendation. We clearly have questions and they clearly have questions that haven't been answered. Um, so I just want to be sure everyone's on the same page as far as we're discovering how to do this thing. And it's different from the farmer's market. Farmer's market is not, it is not an event. Is it, Mr. Dean? It's different from the festival. There is a definition of what.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, farmer's market is not a singular event. It's a, it's a.
An essential service.
It's an essential business, essential service.
So there, so right there, we have some differences. We're talking about two permatees um, that are using the same place, but they're very different activities. And, you know, so there are different different things that our, our employees and our departments have to do because this is a different event.
I love the mindset that we leave James, Russ and Greg to do the necessary footwork since they know what they need to do in order to approve or deny it. And then as a board, we decide with their recommendation, what goes forward. Does that make sense?
Do we have time? We have to meet.
No, 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 but I'm saying in, before the, when's our next meeting?
July 13th.
And then the event is supposed to be scheduled for?
The 11th.
I feel very uncomfortable with all of this. And if it came across Mr. Ruffner as an accusation of you personally, it was not meant to. There are things that we need to consider, which in real time are not possible, you know, with all of the planning, all of everybody can do. And so when I'm looking at this, I'm thinking about the, the safety of our citizens and the safety of our employees. It's not a personal attack. It's not wanting to shut you down. And I, I, I really don't appreciate being told that I don't do my homework. Because I want to make sure to support the people and the businesses in this town the best way that we can. And the farmer's market in the same location as this festival is, they're two very different things. And so when I hear that there are, you know, there are concerns, we don't quite have a plan, we don't know how we're doing this piece. It makes me feel like, like there's not enough time to work all of this stuff out before I have to vote to permit something that happens in the town where I was elected to make a decision. And so that makes me really uncomfortable. And it just, it has to do with a worldwide pandemic. It has nothing to do with team.
Mr. Ruff, Mr. Ruffner, if I could ask a question, are any of your vendors either food or artists or anybody else that is going to be participating in this? Um, and I believe there's a yoga event now. Um, are any of them from out of state?
No, no one is from out of state. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Uh, no, no one is out of state. And I wanted to clarify that the, the point I was making is that the timing was also on your end and on the town's end. It's, it's that I was working with James and working with Greg and everything was fluid. So my comments are based on the fact that we always have our plan together. We always give a detailed map. And the map has never been submitted to the select board prior, prior to approval. I work with Greg and I work with James and they always have it in plenty of time as when they ask for it. So nothing has changed on that front as far as the fluidity of us working together and providing the town with everything they ask for. So this was all a fluid work in progress. So so part of the reason for the delay was also to allow everyone to have their ducks in a row, the town included. Because they were unsure of a couple of things as well and things I was discussing with James. So my obvious defensive tone comes from i- it being implied that we haven't provided everything that was asked of us when that was all fluid. The, the June 27th date was already approved before we had submitted all of those things. So i- i- the, the process is no different now for July 11th. There's actually even more time and James has pretty much everything he wants. Um, Greg is just waiting on the exact map of the layout, which was already explained in the email where we're doing a ton of distancing. There's only, there's only 20 vendors total. There will be probably 10 to 15 feet in between each vendor on the parkway. And it will only be on the left side of the parkway. Um, which will allow for people to uh, walk and use their bikes and do what they normally do on any given Saturday.
I'm just confused. I'm confused when you say that nothing's changed. Do you say nothing's changed since the last fest that you did in September of 19 or nothing's changed since June 27th?
Nothing has changed since June 27th. The, the date was already okayed and I was working with James and I was working with Greg. And then we decided for, for several factors to give everyone a couple more weeks to get everything squared away. So I, I, I could submit a map right now of exactly what it's going to look like. We submit a detailed professionally produced map every single time and, and send it to Greg and send it to Russ and everybody has it. So we can send that tomorrow, but we're just waiting for the, the, the food vendors to get their approval from James, which they've gotten. And so that will then be on the map, which will show exactly who these people are, exactly where they're going to be. And everyone will know in it weeks before the event. The, the event is less than two weeks away, but we, we always get the map when requested, which is usually, you know, more than a week prior to the actual event.
Any additional comments from the board? Any additional comment from James or Greg? You both know what Mr. Ruffner owes you. He's told you what he's going to get you and you're both comfortable with what you have.
Yeah. And one thing to just keep in mind, and Scott knows it, the, the governors, the, the recommendations just came out with the festival. So in it, it has been, it has been changing. So to his defense a little bit, it's, it's so fluid that in, in the parks and rec industry for us is, for instance, we feel like these regulations change from week to week. So uh, as long as you can get the checklist in and the map, I think uh, on our end would be good. And then we'll set up a meeting for a walk group.
Well, you're right. They do. They change. And, and so it, it, it has changed from June 27th. It may not have changed a lot, but it's changed. That, that doesn't mean when, you know, if he's not going to get it done, I trust that he will. I mean, he's, he's, he's not, this is not anything new to Mr. Ruffner. He's, he's, he's put these fests on very successfully in the past, but things do change and I suspect between now and Ju- July 11th, they could change again. And as long as he, you continue to work, the three of you together, then Mr. Ruffner, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I, I don't, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, I thought I heard you talk. Mr. Dean?
Yeah, I, I was just going to reiterate once again, the, the idea that um, James is our health officer, Greg is permitting the, the, the event and what they need, they should get. And that's where I'll take it from making sure that those plans are appropriately in, in place.
Select woman Gilman.
I'd forgotten. You guys, you guys talk too much. No, I, I have to agree with Russ that we have our process. You know, state has changed it. We're going by, uh, we're changing uh, the process to go with that. Um, and they're going to, and you know, and Mr. Beeson has said they're going to do a sidewalk. The only question I have is if something fails at the sidewalk, Mr. Ruffner, what will happen to you? Like, you know, will you have to make a decision like, oh, that vendor can't come or something like that? Well, I guess.
I'm sorry. Is someone waiting on an answer?
Yeah, I was.
I mean, we'll, we'll comply with, with whatever, with whatever happens at the sidewalk, we will comply. I don't think that's an issue.
Well, and I think for moving it from June 27th to July 11th for multiple reasons, but one of them being to allow additional time. I mean, Mr. Ruffner has shown good faith that he's willing to do this the right way. So um, if there's no other comment and discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to keep the event in place on July 11th?
We're making a motion just as we did on June 27th. We're making a motion to, uh, yes, to change the date to July 11th.
Make a motion.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Molly.
The, are we making a motion to change the date to the, to July 11th?
We had approved, we had approved the permitted date of June 27th and the motion presumably will be to extend that approval of the permit to July 11th. Is that correct, select woman around here?
I think so, yes. Is it?
That, I, that's what I was, yeah.
Which is, which is, we're, we're changing the date.
Okay. All right. So we'll make a motion to extend the date or move the date from previously June 26th to July 11th for teams' festival event. Will that suffice? Select woman Gilman.
I, I, I'd perhaps add providing that all of the.
Right. All protocols are, are met, you know, and, and everything is checked off.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Uh, select woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select woman Cowan.
Yeah.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ruffner. Good luck with your event.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dean, anything further on COVID-19?
Um, just that we extended the outdoor dining through August 31st. I just, I just wanted to mention that. That's been very successful. So um, that's it.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to regular business, we have a veterans credit and a tax abatement. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a veterans credit in the amount of $500 for map 85 lot 88, unit four.
Dagged.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select woman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Miss, I did. Hey, hey Chair, how do you vote for the clerk? Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Uh, next we have uh, an abatement that was recommended for denial. And I just want to be, everyone to be clear on uh, the process because I'm not a little clear on the dates that were, that were presented to us. Mr. Dean, maybe you can help me out here?
Sure. There was, I think I can. There was a letter submitted by Ed Tanker from Municipal Resources, one of our assessors. Um, regarding this abatement for 163 Water Street C4 and um, the board, uh, we went back in the rec, in, in the record and couldn't find the minutes where the board voted on this. But I'll just read Ed's letter because it might refresh your memories.
Billy Kay?
What's that?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It says, uh, um, his statement, and he's referring to the owner, that the price which he sold the property at is irrelevant to the question of his abatement request is incorrect. Abatements are basically for the purpose of correcting assessments when it's found that a property owner paid a disproportionate share of property taxes. In some situations, this may be caused by incorrect physical data being listed on the property record card. However, even in those situations, all attributes of the property are reviewed to see if there are any offsetting items such as the porch measurements are larger than listed, or for example, the number of baths is less than what was listed. So it goes on to say, in the subject's case, the real estate of the property was transferred in March 2020 for 373,000 based on recorded tax stamps and forms submitted. When the prices adjusted by the town's equalization ratio of 94.5%, it indicates a higher assessment than the 200, 200, 2,000 assessment that the property taxes were based upon. Um, so in that case, the applicant has not met the burden to show that he paid more than his fair share of tax burden. And the assessors are still of the opinion that he has not met this burden to show that an abatement is applicable. So if the board denies this, uh, he has until September 1st, 2020 to appeal to the BTLA. If he thinks that the decision was incorrect, but that's the recommendation from the assessors for the denial. And like I said, it just hadn't found its way into the minutes. So I was asking the board to sort of revisit it. And if you need to revisit it again, we can give you all of the information and then you can take it up at your next meeting if you will, if that's more preferable.
No, I do remember the, the talk about the uh, sales price isn't what the valuation is based on.
Yes, and this, this happened very early and this was like the second, I think the second meeting. Yes. And this, this happened very early and this was like the second, I think the second meeting of the new board back on March 30th. So it was kind of right in the midst of everything changing over and COVID-19 coming full, full bore at us.
Okay. Well, if there aren't any other questions, I can go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, please.
Um, Mr. Chair, I move to deny, uh, tax abatement for map 72 lot 17, unit four.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Roundtree O'Leary.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye.
So you can have your chair back now.
All right. Um, we have one permit.
This is a grant extension. It's an emergency management grant. We were, um, in the process of putting together this plan, uh, and we needed an extension because of everything related to the pandemic. So the, uh, ask is that the board approve this extension and then, uh, maybe the chairman sign it.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, we did a motion before. I can do this one. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the, uh, extended application of the, for emergency management performance grant, not C, CFDA number 97.042. And further move the, uh, Chair sign, sign off on the extension or sign. Does that cover it all, Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Roundtree O'Leary.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan. Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Assistant Chief Pison for sticking around. Town managers report.
Um, I'll be brief with just two things. One is that we're right in the, we are in the midst of the capital improvement program. So we're working on that. Uh, and also we are beginning to do our deeper dive into the public safety facility staffing analysis, which I know the board, uh, you received copies of it, but haven't had a tangible conversation about. The, um, the last thing I wanted to note too was that uh, I wanted to recognize our town planner, Dave Sharples, uh, who is the author, as you know, of the mixed use neighborhood district zoning amendment that was passed through in the housing advisory committee. Uh, that actually was, uh, noted as the project of the year award from the New Hampshire Planning Association. So, um, congratulations to Dave on that excellent work. And it's a very, it's a, it's a prestigious honor for him. Um, and he did a great job with that. So I just wanted to give him that recognition tonight.
Wonderful. That's great. Congratulations, Mr. Sharples.
And here it is, right here.
Wow. Excellent. Thank you for your brief report, Mr. Dean. Um, the select board committee reports, and I will go in the order that I see you. Selectwoman Roundtree O'Leary.
Woo. All right. I'll make this quick. Swayze Parkway Committee met. I was not there. They met in person. Um, I'll just go through what their agenda was, but I do not have their minutes from that meeting. They discussed the pocket park proposal. That's a mouthful. Sewer project, the pavilion work, music festival slash that, tree watering, mowing, and then also got an update from Dave Short about the pavilion that needs work. And I think there was about a $2,000 discrepancy or $2,200 discrepancy from what they have in the fund to what is needed to pay for the work. But Dave emailed both myself and Russ to sort of figure out how that is going to happen. That is it.
Thank you. Selectman Brown, I've been watching you on TV. You had a busy week.
Oh, yeah. It's great. Uh, so communications committee and facilities committee. So communications, we're really, um, looking at kickstarting, um, everything with, uh, either a master, moving towards something like a master plan. So, um, figuring out some questions to ask the public and as well as, um, amassing uh, data to date. Uh, and then facilities committee was really, uh, welcoming me in and going over, um, a study that had been done for the police department, uh, about, uh, the needs assessment. So, yeah.
Terrific. Selectwoman Gilman?
Uh, I had two meetings, one in the heritage commission, uh, where we discussed the whole heritage neighborhood district, which I will ask them to make a presentation on once we all are on the same page with what it really means. Um, but we're talking about the Salem Street area, which is going to get torn up for, you know, water and sewer projects. So it's about the right time to do it. Um, and the other was the historic district commission met and worked with the, uh, new owner and developer of the Ioka. Uh, it was a good meeting. I think we both got some good feedback from each other. And I think the next meeting this, this month will be the formal application.
Great. Thank you. Vice Chair Cowan?
I think that the only meeting I had was a three hour planning board meeting. Um, and we discussed a, a project that's happening in the Tiff district and we spent most of it on irises and fairy shrimp. Which, and fairy shrimp indicate the presence of a vernal pool, which I did know from biology class. Um, and then there's some protected irises and there was some debate about whether or not we have a protected iris in the, um, in the parcel that we're talking about, or if it's just a regular iris. It, we're, you know, we voted to have a independent study, look at whether or not there is the presence of vernal pools with the understanding that it's very high, hard to diagnose them at this point in the season.
I learned a lot. I actually watched that meeting. Three hours.
You win, Molly. You win the prize this meeting.
I will, I'll let you all know. I know you're hanging on, on the seat of your, I mean, it's very, it's very important stuff. I shouldn't mock, but, um, we'll have the results soon, hopefully.
Okay. I missed the meeting. So were, were you discussing blue flags?
Blue flags. Is that?
The iris. Yeah. It's a wild New Hampshire iris, iris.
Yes, I think that's what it was. And there was a very detailed description of the leaves and you can tell by the leaf. It was very fascinating. And I have to tell you, I was so happy that Kristen Murphy, um, town staff was there. She was very informative and helpful um, in, in sorting out the process between the, the, uh, the developer and the planning board and was very, very helpful.
Great. Thank you. I did not have any, um, committee meetings to report on. Correspondence. We have two letters. The first was from Xfinity just announcing, uh, changes to the TV service. That's in the packet. And then also, uh, a letter from, um, Commissioner Scott. And maybe Mr. Dean, since you've been intimately involved with this, you could touch upon this quickly for us?
Yes, this is just a, a response from some of the correspondents that has been sent to uh, the state regarding their, their role, the DES specifically, in the, uh, removal of a couple of, um, tributaries or, or parts of the Great Bay out of the, out of the, um, the 401 certification process. So if you read through that, you'll, you'll get a sense of it and how it relates to the permit. So it's basically saying nothing's final yet. Stay tuned.
And thank you.
Acknowledging the information.
Okay. Reviewing the calendar, our next meeting is July 13th, uh, and then planning ahead, uh, we will meet on July 27th. Um, and with that, I'll open it up to the board for any final comments. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're moved.
Second.
Motion and second, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Roundtree O'Leary.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all so much. Have a good night.
Bye.